All right, let's go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for July 11th to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 5:35, and with that, Claire Boe, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Right.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Eight members present, you have a quorum of council.
All right, that brings us to the meeting minutes. The agenda actually states, at least the printed, July 27th, the minutes to reflect a date of June 27th. So with that being said, I turn the floor over to Vice President Wood.
Thank you, sir. You mean you do not want to pass minutes before we have the meeting?
No, I don't.
Oh, all right, well then in that case, I would move the June 27th minute.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Four. This is public comment on any of the agenda items tonight. We do have a presentation, we have one item up for discussion, and we have five resolutions for consideration. So with that being said, the way that we do public comment in Committee of the Whole is we actually take folks on a first come, first served basis. We simply ask that you state your name for the record, and again, that you speak to any of the agenda items up for consideration before the council tonight. So with that being said, if you are here for public comment, come on down. I knew we had somebody. How's it going, Loretta?
All right, good to see you all. Okay, as I said last time, the bond proposal for 175 million for a public safety facility, in my view, is too much, too long, and too open-ended. And in light of that, what I would like to suggest be considered instead is to be done in stages. Design it to expand, but do it in stages. Go first with police and the jail, because we know that we're going to get our best return on investment there, since we're paying for outside premises for those situations now, whereas if we settle on using the armory, we own that already, we don't have to worry about an inflated sale price if we announce that we're going to look at that as a potential site. So we own the armory, we can go ahead and we can move the police and the jail into a renovated armory as stage one. Stage two would be the courts, and then stage three would be the fire training center and fire administration. Fire administration has had renovations at Station One within, I think, the last five years as it is. We already have a police and fire millage, and I think you run a risk if you start pushing for too many things, too much with the public, you're going to jeopardize any potential renewal for the police and fire millage, because people won't distinguish between this and that. The difference being once, basically, for wages and to get people hired, and the others for facilities. But I think you need to bring it down to something that could be done in 20 years, or 125 million, or both. We will still have the City Hall hanging over our heads as another hammer, ready to fall on our wallets. And I think there, what we need to look at is reducing the staffing to seven floors, and then turning the other three floors into for sale penthouses, two units per floor, and using the attached jail facility, which then would be empty also, as their private entrance lobby, with a concierge desk, with private elevators, with underground parking, and then also using the additional floors in that building as amenities. You would have a floor for a lounge, one for a gym, one for event meeting space or shared office space, one could be a convenience store. This would generate income for the city to have these sold units run and operated by a management company for the city's behalf. This is prime real estate, folks. We're looking at the City Hall, the City Jail, prime real estate, the best spot locations in the city. Prime views, views without compare. Let's look at doing something that is a little more responsible for the taxpayers to bear the burden and get the best return on their investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have others interested in public comment tonight? All right, come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Holland, and I am a Lansing resident, local pastor, and co-lead of Black Lives Matter Lansing. I stand in protest, vehement protest, with other community leaders across this city for, to protest against Agenda Item Number Six G. President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan into law in March 11, 2021, 1.9 trillion spending package designated to accelerate the post-COVID-19 economic recovery. The City of Lansing was awarded 49 roughly $49 million in two separate payments, one we've already received, and the mayor has given us a breakdown of how that first $24 million was spent, and another 24 to be allocated here this year. And so we stand today, we were here in the wintertime when the mayor had a participatory budget session where we shared ideas, where we felt that $24 million should be allocated. And so in the latest draft resolution on June 2022, we thought it was over, it was an overreach that the mayor had met with many of the community members and had, we talked about ideas on how we move this city forward, how we reduce gun violence, youth gun violence, and economic development, housing for the under the serve and black communities, and we know that this community has been totally devastated by COVID. And so we look at the resolution that was, the draft resolution, where 7.2 million dollars is appropriated and shall be used for the purposes of funding economic impact expenditures for the City of Lansing for critical fleet purchases. 7.2 million dollars for seven, for critical fleet purchases for fiscal year 2023. And so, again, we stand to protest this, that other cities like Madison and Columbus, they have spent 1.2 million for violence prevention, 8 million on housing and homelessness. Columbus, Ohio, 9 million on youth engagement, youth work, paying for college courses, and violence prevention. And so we stand in protest against this. We are demanding that that draft resolution, or whatever it was passed, or whatever was discussed, that that $24 million be released back to this community. There are other federal programs, other state programs that can be accessed for fleet management and fleet purchases. And so the repair of COVID's impact on Black Lansing, the declaration of racism as a public health crisis, we're asking for that $24 million to go toward financial assistance to accelerate full recovery of Black businesses that were devastated, wraparound services for youth, family support. And to achieve these, it is further demand that the current allocation approved by the ways and means be rejected, voted down. And again, we disagree with this unprecedented amount of money. And so we stand with a coalition of community members and leaders across this city to say we demand that there be a real allocation of those ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Holland. Do we have others that are interested in public input? All right. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daphne Whitfield. I'm here to represent Nancy Parker, founder of Women's Opportunity House, a nonprofit organization founded almost 30 years ago, that embraces women who have experienced trauma in their lives and equips them with adequate life resources for them to lead, for them to become whole, for them to heal, while gaining the knowledge and skills needed to create meaningful and impactful lives for themselves and their families. Her faith-based programming provides housing, transportation, mentorship, and guidance to the proper services needed for total life wholeness, which includes mental and behavioral health, physical well-being, academics and leadership training, family counseling, and civic responsibility, or service to their community. Through guided and intentional care, every woman is able to establish healthy relationships, find direction concerning her career path and desires, learn financial responsibility, and discover new ways of living through travel, exposure to the arts, music, museum, and other creative avenues. Nancy's program is unique because it allows women to receive the upfront care and attention needed for their lives to change. Her reputation is impeccable on GuideStar and Candid, and she owns and operates Women's Opportunity House debt-free, owning all of her homes. She is currently asking for the $237,000 from the funding that we have received for her to continue her programming, because with COVID, she has lost her primary source of income, which was a bingo hall that she ran for almost 30 years. Many of the women that have been a part of her program have gone on to be nurses, doctors, nurse practitioners, psychologists, counselors, that are right here in the City of Lansing, and some of them even work for the City of Lansing, and they are continuing to give to our community just as they were giving to. I'm asking for the $237,000 so that we can continue to do the work that she has done for almost 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitfield. Do we have others? All right, come on down.
Hi there, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Amy Morris Hall. I'm here from the Potter Park Zoological Society with many members of my staff. We wanted to express how we felt about the change to the mayor's proposed budget by the Ways and Means Committee. We were to be allocated $171,000, which were the losses that we incurred in our education department due to a lack of programming that was COVID-related, and this was in 2021. So we had already gotten through 2020. We had furloughed staff, we had suspended programming, and we had tried to pivot and adapt to what we found in this new situation. We struggled that first year, things are going much better now, but I think it's very important that you realize that the Potter Park Zoological Society is a required entity by the Association of the Zoos and Aquariums. I think there's some confusion about what the society does. The society is the nonprofit support organization for the zoo. We are not funded by county millage dollars. We are not funded by anything other than our programming fees and the funds that we raise. Our role is to support the zoo in its efforts to inspire conservation of animals and the natural world, as well as contribute to place-making and creating a really interesting community for people that live in the greater Lansing area. The society is funded completely by funds that we supply ourselves. We don't have a net. We haven't had a net. We found our way through this with hard work, with people being furloughed, and have struggled and struggled until we've come to the other side of this, and I feel like this $171,000 would offer us some stability that we haven't had after coming through what is going on two and a half years of COVID-related losses. I hope that the council will reconsider this, and I want to thank the mayor for including this in his budget. It was a small allocation in light of the tremendous amount of funds that the city council, or that the city is receiving, and it is intended for recovery. And we, as part of, a very important part of this community, we need to recover along with everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others? If so, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Eldridge, and I've lived in Lansing's Fourth Ward since 2017. I'm here today to ask the committee to vote no on the American Rescue Plan Act budget resolution, and work with the mayor to fund the proposed guaranteed income pilot. This program would provide $500 a month for 18 months to at least 100 Lansing households. A similar program in Stockton, California, has been the subject of academic research. Researchers found that the recipients had increased full-time employment, increased well-being, and reduced stress. The research also showed that recipients use the funding to pay off debt and buy necessities. On Tuesday, June 28th, I called the city council office and spoke with office manager Sherri Boeck. I left messages for the at-large and Fourth Ward council members, including councilmembers Brown, Jackson, Spitzley, Spatafor, and Wood, requesting that they call me to discuss the guaranteed income pilot. Councilmember Brown returned my call. Councilmember Brown explained a few of the reasons why the council does not currently plan to fund the pilot, and I'd like to address these. First, he explained the council feels it should prioritize basic city services, including vehicle fleet upgrades. However, the intent of the federal American Rescue Plan Act funding is not only to help city budgets recover, but also to help household budgets recover. This is a historic windfall of funding, and it would be wrong if we didn't use any of these dollars to directly assist Lansing families. The guaranteed income pilot would be a mere 2% of the funding currently being allocated. Next, councilmember Brown explained that the council's proposed budget includes some funding to be spent at the mayor's discretion, and this could theoretically fund the pilot. I am not satisfied with that. There will be many different priorities for that pot of funding, leaving the status of the pilot uncertain. I am asking that the guaranteed income pilot have its own line item in the budget. Today's meeting packet includes at least three letters from community members in support of this pilot, and the council should prioritize it accordingly. Finally, I'd like to address legal concerns that councilmembers Spatafor raised when we exchanged emails earlier today. If there are legal issues, I would suggest that the pilot be modified to fit what is legally allowed. If that is not possible, the city should use this funding to make a $1 million investment in some other type of direct household cash assistance. I'm concerned that this COVID relief funding is primarily being used to shore up the city budget, when it should also go directly to households who are struggling. To conclude, I thank you for serving on city council. I think you all probably ran for office with the hopes of changing people's lives. This is a rare chance for you to actually do so. $500 is a life-changing amount of money to many, many families in Lansing. It might mean being able to afford a car repair, so you can still get to work, being able to move into safer housing, or being able to keep up with the rising costs of food and gas. I would like to live in a community where every household, including every child, has their basic needs met. This pilot could be the beginning of that new community.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eldridge.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate that. Do we have other folks that would like, we did have a few folks come in late. We are actually, at this point, participating in public comment to any of the agenda items. So if any of you would like to come down, what we are doing is taking public comment on a first come, first served basis, and you do have three minutes, again, to speak to agenda items. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you for listening to my thoughts. My name is Joshua Gillespie. I represent LMTS Community Outreach Services. And just a few months ago, we were rewarded $100,000. We were ecstatic, woo-hoo! But then we just recently learned that those funds would be revoked. Let me just give you a little background. LMTS, three years ago, served 85 families a month. In December of 2021, 700 units were served. Currently, we're doing 1,500 units, impacting 4,500-plus individuals. The composition of those who are coming, or figuring our space, our Middle Eastern population has increased, our African population has increased, our Cuban population has increased exponentially, our Asian, particularly Hmong population is on an uptick, and just recently, our Ukrainian and Bosnian population has increased. We are concerned about food insecurity. I recognize that there is so much that needs to be done, but the fact of the matter is, families are still hungry. Right here in Michigan, 1.3 million families go hungry. Of that 1.3 million, up to 300,000 are the children, are babies. Perhaps you're not concerned about the children, perhaps I'm not concerned about my own children in terms of food, excuse me, but there are children who are going hungry. I'm simply asking that you reconsider. You reconsider that allocation for LMTS, because we are doing the work, and I invite you to join us. I invite you to come and serve with us. We're open Tuesday through Thursday from 10 to 3:00 on Fridays, Fresh Food Fridays. We're serving 150-plus people. The money, what would the money do for us? It would allow us to provide free mental health therapy, free legal consultation, provide deliveries to our single parents, our veterans, our persons with disabilities. It would allow us to expand not only our space, but to provide these services within that space. It would also give us opportunity to be intentional about the food that we serve on Fridays, fresh fruit, fresh vegetables. We understand the economic times. People are hungry. I'm simply asking that you reconsider that $100,000 for LMTS. Be on the right side of helping our families, because they're in need. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. We appreciate it. Come on down.
Thank you all. I'm BJ Puchala, 2801 Bryan Circle in Lansing. I am here today representing the YMCA of Lansing. And I've been a volunteer with the YMCA since 2012, so that's long enough for me to learn that I should let other people talk about the details. But I'm the past board chair, and it's a pleasure to be here today. And I'd like to talk about ARPA funds. You guys have a huge task, figuring out a framework and implementation of how to make these one-time investments as meaningful as possible. We submitted a proposal that we think offers a really great opportunity to make an impact in Lansing, and it relates to expanding access to early childcare. This early childcare access is not unique to Lansing, but especially emerging from the pandemic, it's one of these really sticky friction points that's getting in the way of economic opportunity. And so with a pretty modest investment, we can make some careful modifications to our facility at Oak Park, the Oak Park Ranch, just off South Cedar, and really make a meaningful expansion of our ability to serve families in Lansing, and also, you know, provide some relief on this economic growth issue that is plaguing communities, you know, everywhere. Finally, we think it's particularly helpful in that neighborhood where our branch is located, because it provides a safe and accessible place for kids to be active and healthy outside of the normal childcare hours, operations. So as you're going through this process, whatever, you know, whatever framework you build and implement, if there is a way to fit this proposal within that framework, we're very confident it would make a really meaningful difference to families throughout our city. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your work and your thoughtfulness, and good luck to you. There are other people are going to talk, too, so, you know, forgive me for not making all the mistakes related to details, but thanks for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Heather Kim, and I too am here representing the YMCA with my fellow board member BJ. I am currently serving as the Chair for the YMCA of Metropolitan Lansing. I also serve as President of the South Lansing Business Association, and in both of my positions, I've seen the global impact of the work of community organizations. Especially since the pandemic, we have seen the restrictions of so many resources, and I know that there are many individuals in our community hurting and in need of additional assistance. Particularly with my work at the Y, I have seen firsthand the services we provide to the community, such as the 360,000 meals served to children, children and families during the pandemic. It is my hope that you will consider funding the mayor's request for 4.2 million for community programs. Specifically, the Y would use 160,000 to invest, as BJ just spoke about, in the childcare programs at our Oak Park facilities. For decades, we have enjoyed our partnership with the City of Lansing, and I believe together we have impacted thousands of families. I do hope that a portion of these ARPA dollars will be used to continue to enhance the work community organizations, such as the YMCA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lansing City Council. My name is Priscilla Bordeo. I am Michigan statewide manager for Crime Survivors for Safety and Justice, and I serve on the YMCA board. I'm also the Worship and Events Director at Rivers of Life Church, just to name a few. Lansing is my home. I grew up in a very dysfunctional home, living in 17 different houses across Lansing. So I've worked really hard to get where I am. I love this community and all that it has to offer. I relied on a lot of the community resources growing up, which is why I'm here today, to support the request of the 160,000 funding to support the childcare programs, programs at Oak Park YMCA. When you grow up in a home that wasn't safe, education centers that provide programming for children, that provide safe and nurturing environments, mean the world to someone like me. One of the projects that the funding will provide and support is the playground. Playgrounds are known to offer emotional, social, mental, and physical benefits to children. They also help a child to improve their self-esteem, collaborative skills, and enhance critical thinking. Physically, they help with balance by developing a child's fine motor skills and gross motor skills, as well as coordination. Plus, playing is essential and a critical role in establishing active habits and to avoid obesity. I'd like to see this funding be provided to continue to be a positive outlet for other kids who were in the same condition that I was as a child. When home life is chaotic and always changing, the parks become a consistent, safe place for children to imagine a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to address city council? Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Shimmel, and I'm currently serving as Development Director at the YMCA of Metropolitan Lansing. I've been involved in fundraising for more than 40 years here in Lansing, and I know how important community programs and resources are to the health and the well-being of a city. The YMCA of Lansing is hoping to secure $160,000 for a childcare project at the Oak Park YMCA through the ARPA funding. As you know, the Oak Park Y is located on the south side of the city and represents a section of our community that has deep-felt needs. The program, if funded, would help us provide a playground which could be used by nearby Lansing residents, would also provide for much-needed renovations for those who use the Oak Park YMCA for early learning programs. These are high-value improvements which will provide meaningful support to the south side of Lansing. I hope you will consider allocating ARPA monies to support the work of the Y, which has been in the community, providing support for 145 years. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate it. Is there anyone else interested? Yes, there is. Just a second, we're going to try to figure out this remote. Now you're seeing just how important our office manager is to our operations up here. Let's see what we got here. Nope, that didn't do it. You know what? We're going to go ahead and start. We'll let, yep, oh, here she comes. Thank God. The wizard behind the curtain is back. Praise Jesus. All right. Okay, go ahead. You can start.
My name is Casey Thompson, and I have the pleasure of serving as the President and CEO of the YMCA. And I'm hoping that myself being here and others in the community tonight, we can really lift up the importance of community programs and hope, and really hope that the city council takes a moment to consider moving this forward in your guys' decision on how to use your $50 million with the ARPA money that you've received. As part of a community organization, I see firsthand the needs that the City of Lansing residents have, and at the Y, we have had the privilege for many years of being a provider of many services and resources to many seniors, families, and kids. Although we service the whole city through multiple community programs located all over, we specifically at the Oak Park YMCA have a childcare center that's located on the south side. We serve a very diverse population and many, many, many children and families at that facility. The south side of town has many struggles. The families on the south side need every resource that they can get, as you know. And from the proposal that the Y has put forward, our goal is to really focus on a high-quality childcare center to really increase what we're currently doing and be able to maximize and service more families. I would love to stand in front of you today and say the Y was not impacted by COVID, but quite frankly, I can't. Just like many other organizations that have struggled, so has the Y. But one of the greatest needs that has emerged for us is really serving our families, and specifically through our childcare programs. I know that the Y is not alone. I know we need to be creative. I know we need to approach our business differently, and we are doing that. But as a community and as a city, I would love it if the council could really take consideration on how you can use these ARPA funds to not only help the YMCA, but help many of the community programs that are certainly struggling and would use the dollars that you provide us in a great way to directly impact families and kids. For 145 years, our YMCA has changed, we have morphed, we have provided resources, and we have been able to fill gaps throughout our years of being in this community whenever we can. The residents of Lansing still turn to the Y as a place to get help, get resources, and get connected. We have many staff who have dedicated their careers and their life to helping our community. My ask of you today is to please consider keeping the community program funding through ARPA an option, so that the Y and other organizations can continue to serve those who need it. I don't envy your task of allocating out ARPA dollars as the need is extremely high within the city. However, I hope you are still open-minded to the idea of carving a little bit out in the category of community programs to ensure that organizations that provide direct resources and support to families can still do so. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and I really hope that you consider keeping this funding open as you guys move through your process. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other citizens wishing to?
Hello, City Council. I'm Teresa Rosado Nanacy and I am the new Director and Founder of Casa de Rosado Galleria and Cultural Center located on Mount Hope Avenue next to the Fabulous Acres neighborhood. And during my time, over the last five years, I've, we offer free services to the children and a lot of adults in the area, whether it be food or reading services. I've noticed gunfire increase. I live upstairs and I'm over my facility. The gunfire has increased from a weekly occurrence to a daily occurrence. And I've observed a shooting in front of my block as well as numerous accidents. But I'm here to request that the Agenda Item 6G be reconsidered and voted down. And the reason why is because of the numerous meetings I've had with people in the neighborhood, the Fabulous Acres Neighborhood Association President Maria Castillo, as well as D. Canty Armstrong, who is the Acting Director now for the Summit, Village Summit Community Center. We've noted that a lot of the problems are related to landlords and we have an impoverished neighborhood and we have landlords that live outside of our community and are neglecting their roles in making sure we have safe residents living in our community. And I would love to see these resources redirected to the numerous people that have been impacted tremendously by the pandemic. There, our BIPOC community is facing a lot of health issues right now. We've had deaths. We've had people, families that have had to figure out ways to pay for all of this. Food, we have it all. We have all the problems. We don't, we have a lack of resources for licensed builders to come in and make repairs on the homes. If you take a walk down the neighborhood, it's really sad. And people want to do better, but they don't have the resources to do so. So I would just like to say that if you could please reassess this and please consider a different route in allocating those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Mr. Kopich?
I'll leave this up here. My name is Dale Kopich, Branch President, NAACP. I thought this was at six for some communication I had, six, not at 5:30. But either way, I'm here in regard to the ARPA dollars that were put out in finance for community projects. I participated with a number of the groups who submitted a proposal with a number of ideas and such that we thought would be great for the community. All of these projects looked at rebuilding youth engagement, et cetera. So one of the key things that's part of this proposal. I looked at your sheet that I got that showed how the money was being dispensed and I was quite concerned, quite concerned that all of the money went to municipal projects. None of the money went to any of the projects that could better our youth or make a better position for people who have no housing, et cetera. Other, other communities such as Madison and Columbus have done a number of things where they have put together $8 million of money into housing projects for affordable housing. And we are doing nothing, nothing in regards to that. We had a number of projects that would get youth an opportunity to get off the street and do some things that would be beneficial to the city, even working for the city. Well, that was one of the things that we had in our proposal. And a number of others, the clergy forum and another others has some very key, key items in there that could do some very, very big things in this city. And all of it was just washed away. It's a lot of concern. I'm from Flint, Michigan, and I could tell you how Flint has, this is the same thing that we had when I came here to go to college, how Flint started to deteriorate. That's the same thing that's going to happen to this city when we take money that's available to go into these kind of projects and make, make a change for people. Now, if at the end of the day, you want to look back and say, oh, we got $56 million in our projects that wasn't spent, wasn't, yeah, oh, yeah, where did that money, oh, it came from AARP. I think you really need to consider what you are doing. Take your time, revisit that list, and make a determination. Are you really want to do something for the people, for the youth, for homeless people in this city? Then do so. If not, continue to do what you're doing at this moment, this, this moment of going down a path that I think is just a bad way to go. So I appreciate you taking time to hear my comments and I hope you will reconsider some of your projects. Thank you.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate your comments. Do we have others? Going once? All right, come on down, Mr. Mercer.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that, it's going to possibly go on the ballot for the people of Lansing, that 175 mil. I'm hoping the people of Lansing turn that down. I know all the family members I have here in the City of Lansing are not for it either. They paid for it back in the past and didn't see nothing hardly get done like it should have. And if you remember, let me see, Carol, you, and I believe Chris Whoop were the only two on council back during the time when, you remember Jerry Ambrose that used to sit down here talking about the South Precincts over there on Cedar and Homes? They sold it, which is now, what is it, a Neogen now? And they said that it was flooding down in the basement and they had to move out. And then they end up moving a little north on May Street between, what is it, Larch and Pennsylvania? And then the roof started leaking, if I remember right, hearing people like John talking about. And then they moved from there to the South Side Community Center. And now that one that was here about a month ago speaking about they need this money to get all these up-to-date, these projects, he's saying it's too far of a distance from the southwest side of town, clear up to Sheridan Road if there needs to be a, if there's a call coming from that area, then they need somebody over there, police. If they'd have just stayed where they were, they're on Cedar and Homes Road, or maybe they're on May Street, they wouldn't have to travel as far. It tells you how stupid those, you know, people were back in the past that used to be the ones in charge of Lansing. And I'm hoping this don't go through because you already paid for what, you know, you are now needing again. Why should you pay another time, the second time? So I'm not, you know, in favor of this. And I hope all these people of Lansing turn this down. The only thing I agree on is maybe those vehicles you have down below here in the parking lot, in the basement area, those boulders coming down from the ceiling, not laying on your car. That's probably the only thing I agree on is fixing it down below here so you can not, you know, so you don't have to worry about your vehicle getting damaged. And that's all I have to say. And remember too, the people of Lansing, the, everything is going up because if you remember Annie Kilpatrick talking about utilities going up, everything's going up. How in the world are they going to be able to afford paying more in their property taxes? Something's wrong with you. You're up here.
Thanks, Mr. Mercer. We appreciate it. Do we have further comment? Seeing none? All right. We are going to move on to Agenda Item Five. This is a presentation from the Capital Region Airport Authority. Specifically, we have President and CEO Nicole Noel Williams with us. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. Just make sure really quickly, as I kind of give you a quick lead-in, just make sure the, the green light on the microphone is on. Make sure it's pulled up nice and close. Council members, you do have, I believe we just received a presentation from Mrs. Nicole Noel Williams. We also, I believe, have a presentation that's been given to City TV as well.
We have, yes.
All right, fantastic. Well, first of all, we appreciate you being here. As folks know, Mrs. Nicole Noel Williams was actually hired on as President and CEO last spring, but was not obviously a newcomer to the airport as she had served, I think, some 14 years prior to a three-year lapse to pursue other professional opportunities. So we certainly appreciate the prior work done and certainly what you're doing with the airport now during what are just some unprecedented times. So we have Ms. Noel Williams with us today to talk about all things airport. We know that as an example, there's a highlight of potential for cargo capacity enhancement, things of that nature. So we're going to go ahead and turn the floor over and then we will follow up the presentation with council questions, sorry, council questions and comments. So with that being said, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Again, Nicole Noel Williams, President and CEO for the Capital Region Airport Authority. Thank you again for the opportunity to be able to come in and provide some updates on some of the development projects we're working on and also just overall awareness. I've had some opportunities to, I think, connect up with most of the council members and provide some of the updates as I came on board May of last year, so just over a year back with the Airport Authority. Not new to the industry, started back in early 90s in the industry, actually loading, unloading planes and de-icing aircrafts back when I was in college. So it's been quite an interesting career path and excited to be here and excited to help make a difference and a change to one of your economic tools that you have right here in your, in your back door. This is one of those key pieces that helps to support your economic development folks here that are in the room today, as well as those in the region, trying to attract and bringing in new organizations and corporations because of that ease of access to move passengers and cargo. So let's, let's move forward with the presentation. I think I've got a clicker here. Let's see. Looks like it came up a little bit wrong off with a, do you know which direction I'm supposed to?
If it's, yeah, you know, we've, we've struggled with that historically. Uh, was that you? That you?
That's me. Okay, we're, we're getting there, but I think there's going to be some, looks like there's a...
Mr. President, can I explain it?
Sure.
Yeah.
There's a delay. There's a light in the back that tells the City TV folks when to advance it. So when you click it, the light lights up back there. So it's not instantaneous.
As instantaneous is. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. So the Airport Authority, we're actually, we have three members appointed by the City of Lansing and three from Ingham County. And we have ex-officios that actually sit from Clinton and Eaton County that are part of the Airport Authority Board. So on Slide Four kind of highlights a little bit more about the airport. We're an airport authority, so we own and operate the Capital Region International Airport, which all of you know is the Lansing Airport. We also own Mason Jewett, which is more of a general aviation airport, and I'll go through some detail shortly. But some of the key priorities is retain and expand passenger service, both domestic and international, as well as increase tonnage, land development, and support corporate and general aviation. Is the volume in the mic good for you guys?
It is.
Okay. On Page Five, we're, let's highlight just a couple of key things about the Lansing Airport. A $1 billion economic impact to the entire region, a little over 2,000 acres of land. We actually sit in all three counties, Clinton, Eaton, and Ingham County. Makes things interesting as we're trying to move forward with various projects and funding sources. A little over 700 employees that are at the airport. Now, the Airport Authority itself, we have 42 employees, but the amount of badges that we have out, these are individuals that are working at the airport, little over 700 badges are distributed and authorized for use at the airport. Now, we're one of two airports in the state of Michigan that have a Customs and Border Protection Federal Inspection Station that allows us to clear international passengers' flights of over 19 people. So Detroit Metro and Lansing are the only two in the state of Michigan that have an FIS facility. So you think, gosh, there's a lot of international airports in the state of Michigan. They are, but they can clear 19 people or less on an international airplane. So that's the difference. UPS, a Midwest hub located right in Lansing, we clear 60 million pounds of cargo annually and budget just, just over $9 million on an annual basis. Page Six? Should I don't, if I slide this forward? We've got Mason Jewett. We have 81 aircrafts that are based down at Mason. These are more of a general aviation type aircrafts. 335 acres of land, $18 million economic impact, corporate and general aviation development opportunities that are there. We just updated our airport layout plan. And in our airport layout plan, we are noting some development opportunities along Kip Road. So there's, there's future development opportunities within that region. Of course, Lansing Community College Aviation Technology Program that's down in our Mason Airport. A lot of interest, you know, you've heard over and over again about the shortage of pilots. You have the same situation with a shortage of mechanics. And some of this ties, the pilot side ties into the retired, mandatory retirement age of 65. You've got baby boomers going into that retirement age. You have a lot of early retirements that happened during the middle of the pandemic. And you also have some changes that occurred on the federal side for requirement to fly in the right seat of an aircraft. So it used to be 250 hours to start flying in a commercial airplane, 250. In 2013, that rule changed to 1,200 hours needed to fly in the right seat. So you're talking about another $100,000 of investment and training just to get, become a pilot. Now, there's alternative ways to get into it. If you become out of the military, it's 750. If you've got a bachelor's degree, let's say you go to Western Michigan, you get an aviation degree, it's 1,000 hours. But that's a slowing, it's a slowing process of getting new pilots into the system. And we're dealing with this impact with about a little over 10 or 12 years not focusing on this coming down the pipe. And, but that Mason, LCC program really helps to support the mechanic side because you got to look at the big picture. It's not just the pilots that we have shortage of, it's the mechanics as well. Next slide, Slide Seven. I think I've got it right on the screen. Am I catching up? Yeah. So Port Lansing, this is one of the other key pieces. When we became a port of entry, we have used Customs Border Protection, as I mentioned, to clear passengers, but we can also clear cargo. So when you think of economic development in this region and the opportunity to bring international cargo here, instead of a product coming in to the border, being set on a freighter, sitting there waiting to be cleared for a week, you can actually put that in bond and we can clear it right here at the Lansing Airport. So this, it's one of those unique pieces for us, as well as having a foreign trade zone that covers eight counties for future economic development to support even a container freight station. So breakdown in distribution. Page Eight, we're going to highlight some of these development projects. Airline incentives, cargo, site readiness, roadway improvements, the Airport Capital Improvement Program and our master plan update. So I'll go through these quickly because I think I only had about 15 minutes. So I'll try to run through these as quickly as possible. But Slide Nine, am I on Slide Nine up there? Okay. So Slide Nine is the airline incentives. It's working on how do we become a competitive market? Think of MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, is putting incentives on the table to help attract and bring in new businesses into the region. And I know you guys have been very essential in, in some of these efforts throughout this, this area as well. But we have to do that at the airport side as well. And so this is providing waived airport fees, marketing dollars, things that we can do to help support a carrier. And so in combination of, of developing these incentive packages, but also going after federal funds that are available for small community air service development grant, we did have, submit an application for half a million in supports for some air service. And we'll find out the end of, end of July, first part of August, if we're going to be awarded that funding. That would help support service to a hub as well as potentially to more of a vacation type destination. Page Eleven, I'm going to highlight the cargo ramp. We did receive 8.183 million from the federal side. So when I first came on board, we knew that the earmark requests were still in the mix and so we applied and put a request in for funding. This would be an expansion to our existing cargo ramp. So UPS, as I mentioned earlier, 60 million pounds of cargo. We are 90 minutes from 90% of the state's population, 90 minutes from 90% of the state's population. How can we access and use our cargo to diversify funds and see some growth, whether it be with UPS, with our 200 and plus, 200-plus employees that are there today, to expanding those kinds of relationships with other cargo carriers that may have interest in our central locations? So we're under the design aspects of this cargo ramp expansion. We're looking at making a couple adjustments from the original mock-up design, which should give us some cross-talk facility space available so we could have aircrafts on one side, cargo trucks available on the other side. This next slide highlights a couple, you can see the graphics of the two phases that would be added on to the cargo ramp. Slide Thirteen, we're noting the site readiness, so utilities. So just to the south of the cargo ramp, there's a 37-acre area that we're working on developing. We did submit an EDA grant with cosponsorship with Lansing Board of Water and Light to bring in utilities necessary so we can start building on that property. This is leased land, so obviously one of the key things we need to have is, is be ready for a company that's ready to go, can start building right away and not waiting for utilities to come in. So we've, we've had good discussions with EDA. Board of Water and Light's been great partners with us throughout this process and we hope here in the next month or so that we find out if we're... here in the next month or so that we find out if we're able to be awarded the $4.4 million to get our land ready for future development. There's a couple key partners that we're working with already that have already established some timelines for construction, and we do have some mock-up designs for additional warehouse space. We own a 48,000-square-foot building today, and we're looking at 160,000-square-foot spec building design that's already been created with, in partnership with LEAP, with C2AE. So we'll see how all that moves forward, but if you know of a developer that's interested in making an investment, we'd love to continue those discussions. The next slide kind of highlights those 37-acre plotted areas. Of course, this is just design itself, so we can make some modifications based on development. Slide 15 notes the runway improvement. So if we're going to increase the amount of cargo tonnage coming in and out of the airport, increase the amount of vehicles coming in and out of warehouse spaces, working with some additional partnerships with the National Guard, we're going to have to make some changes to our roads. And we own the roads, the Boulevard, as well as Port Lansing, so the north, south, east, west. And so this year, we're taking steps to complete some studies to go after the RACE grant, which would be a $9.3 million road improvement project to upgrade all of our roads to a Class A road system. So part of our roads have already been upgraded, but we need to finish completing that project, including some roundabouts in the middle of the Boulevard. If you've been out to the airport, you go over railroad tracks, and then you've got semi trucks that are trying to cross at the same time. So there's some efficiencies that we can work with on that project. We've also been working with Clinton County Road Commission to see about improvements heading north on both of our roads up to 69 as well. So that way, we have better direct access for the semi trucks as they're coming in and going. This next slide just kind of highlights some of those key pieces within Page 16. Page 17, noting some of the additional funding that we've gone after. We did receive $2 million on the state side to help support the sewer and roads within that cargo ramp development project. So we're, we're excited to see all of these pieces come together, and it's been a pretty exciting first year being back at the airport with all these projects going on. Page 18, am I up to speed?
Nope, we need to go to the next page. Thank you.
There we go. Are we on Page 18 with the pilot training program? So we're working with Eaton RESA. As I mentioned earlier on, we've got an issue with a lack of pilots, right? So what can we do to help support it? Well, if we can get interest in the junior, senior level of high schools through the RESAs, through Ingham ISD, through Lansing schools, to provide an interest level, getting folks out to the airport and start some of these classes right, right at a junior, senior level, that's, that's our goal. So Eaton did apply for an FAA grant for $260,000, $260,000. This would help support some of the initial startup cost. We've got space available on the west side of the airport that they would be renting that space and looking at other sponsors and partners along the way to expand this program. But excited that if all of this comes forward, they're looking at, by the end of this year, they'd be announcing the program publicly, and then students would be able to get registered starting fall of next year. Page 19 highlights some of the Airport Capital Improvement Program. So this is funding that comes through based off of the tax that's paid on your tickets. So every time you fly in and out of Lansing, there's a tax that's being collected in the federal side. Those tax dollars are being distributed throughout airports throughout the United States based off the amount of people on the airplanes, how many people are using your airport. So whenever you guys are traveling, I need all of you to put your butts in the seats of the airplanes that are coming in and out of Lansing. I'll say that again, I need all of you to fly in and out of Lansing anytime that you're traveling, as well as all of you back here. So the more support that we get here, the, the more funds that will be allocated towards our airport. And that's, these are just some of the construction projects, and this is maintaining facilities so aircrafts can operate in and out of Lansing, as well as looking at a master plan update, which I'll note here in the next slide. So Slide 20 highlights down at Mason Jewett, some of the work that we're doing with some of these additional federal dollars. Again, these are more of just basic infrastructure repairs, maintenance to the airport itself. Slide 21, we know the master plan update, so think of your, your master plan as your big vision of what you're going to do 10, 15, 20 years down the road. What are we going to do with the 2,000 acres? Where do we see some future development occurring? How do we tie this all in? And if it's not tied into your master plan, you will not receive federal funds to support the project. So some updates are necessary for us to go after some other funds for, for future projects. Page 23 highlights our brew port. We've got a new restaurant that opened back up. We lost our vendor during the middle of the pandemic, and at the end of last year, we got a new operator, and we just got our liquor license approved just a few weeks ago. So if you're ready for a cocktail before you head out on a flight, you can now do that at the Lansing Airport. Next slide, Slide 24, we've made some upgrades to some space. So when I first came on board, you couldn't even get a cup of coffee upstairs because we had lost all of our vendors. So we opened up all of our, it used to be a, like a business lounge. We opened up that space, put a market 24/7 up, so quick grab, grab your food, grab your coffee, whatever you want. And it also included some lounge space as well. So I think I'm on Page 25, or at least close to it. And, but this is some of the additional soft seating that's now available for customers as they come and go. I'm going to run through these next slides pretty quick, because I think I've been on for probably close to my 15. So Page 27, kind of notes our catchment area. So this is where our passengers are coming from. So that 30-mile drive around the Lansing Airport, these are our customers. Anybody in that region that's flying, they should be flying out of Lansing. That's what we want to do and help provide the support that we can to make that happen. So that's just shy of 600,000 passengers. 45 minutes is 1.2 million possible passengers, and then the 60-minute drive is 3.2 million people in population. So that catchment area really is more of our unique services. So our American Airlines to Washington DC, folks are easily driving in an hour to use that service. Of course, our international passenger service that we have seasonally. This next year, Apple announced additional frequencies. We'll have three to Cancun, starting in the end of January, two to Punta Cana, and one to Jamaica. Those are weekly flights. So every day, starting the end of January to the first part of April, there'll be an international destination outside of Tuesdays. So a lot of different frequency and opportunities. Slide 30, it's very small, there's a lot of red, which is not positive. Of course, the goal is getting us back to where we used to be in 2019 with passenger numbers, with the amount of frequency of services in and out of Lansing. Slide 31 notes a little bit, I think this is a good story to kind of share, when we look at airline passenger service, your ultra-low-cost carrier service or your low-cost carrier services are growing with more flights, more frequency. As you head further to the right, you're seeing like carriers like Delta, they're down actually another 3% for the month of July from where they were in June because of challenging issues with pilot shortage. Slide 32, you can see also, all the way to the far right side, you see Detroit. Again, these are the amount of flights going in and out of hubs throughout the United States or major markets, and Detroit's still down 30%. But think of the reason why they're down is because the small, mid-size airports that are feeding Detroit are losing service and their service levels are down as well. So we're anticipating in October, we'll have some additional frequency from Delta come back to our market, and we're working on a few other possible projects that hopefully in another month or so, if not sooner, I can have some more information on that. Slide 33 just highlights some of the frequency opportunities. Minneapolis is a big draw. New York, 85 passengers, the PDEWS, the P-D-E-W-S, passengers daily each way. So New York has 85 in our region, our catchment area. So that's, there's a lot of potential to New York, Atlanta. Of course, your Florida markets, think of Orlando, Tampa, Fort Myers, Phoenix, Nashville, Carolina. So all of them are key markets as we're talking to airlines, and I've had multiple airline meetings throughout this past year, and I continue to meet with carriers and look at opportunities for growth. Page 34 highlights some of the fluctuation, where we may see some spikes certain times of the year in certain markets, and all of these are part of the discussion that we have with carriers. Page 35, what we're asking and what the, there's a Mid-Michigan Business Travel Coalition. If you're not familiar with them, they're a local business group, representatives from Michigan State University, most of the insurance companies, manufacturers, executives that are members of this organization, they're committed to utilizing Lansing first. They're changing travel policies to enforce or recommend to their employees that they fly Lansing even if it costs up to $200 more. They're looking at the big picture, putting an employee in the car and driving, the reimbursement for the gas, the reimbursement for the additional costs for parking. When they look at the bigger picture, they're looking at average of 200, and so many of them put that in their travel policy that if it costs even 200 more to fly to Lansing, they want their employees to do that. And so we're asking other corporations and communities and individuals to look at that as well. And that's the end of my presentation, but I would love any questions that you guys might have.
Absolutely. So you didn't meet the 15-minute mark, but I'm impressed.
Hi.
35 minutes of presentation in 20 minutes. That's pretty good.
Okay, all right.
So take a breath. And as you do that, do we have any questions, any comments from City Council? Councilman Spatafor?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Nicole, thanks for coming tonight. Really important information you're sharing with us. I just want to say thank you for taking the job with us. I don't, you know, some people, when they're little kids, they want to be doctors and lawyers. I imagine you wanted to be an airport CEO from sitting through your interviews.
Sure.
Your passion for the industry and Lansing specifically is really very cool and interesting, and I appreciate what you're bringing to the table here at LAN, you know, including the new socks, which I love, but just the, the things you're doing to try and make sure that this airport, which is vital for the community, stays relevant in post-COVID-19 airline world. So appreciate that, and we definitely fly Lansing as often as we can. But Councilmember Spitzley and I were discussing, with all the new international flights to Mexico, if you need us to take a tour, we'd, we'd be happy to...
Yes, we can talk.
Yeah, thanks for being here. It's all serious.
Yeah, no, thank you. It, it truly is, as I mentioned at the very beginning, this is, this is a tool for future economic development. If you have an airport that is supported, you will have more service. It's all about, think of your small businesses down the corner. If people are going and buying and visiting and purchasing items and using their services, they're going to grow. And that's what we have here, is multiple small businesses being run within a facility that's like a mall, and we're managing and maintaining the mall and trying to attract, you know, future development opportunities.
We have Councilwoman Spitzley and the Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. Love that 5:40 AM flight. Not really, but it's necessary.
Good connections, though.
It, it is, and that's, that's my jam.
Yep, mine too.
4:00 in the morning, so, but, so one of the things, when I served on the airport board, and I would tell folks that that is a great board, if you're looking at serving on a board, look at the airport board, it's a great way to participate in, you know, help chart the path of the airport. But one of the things that we had talked about was, you know, how do we get the larger corporations and businesses here in the city of Lansing to, to think about our airport first? I mean, we have, we have a very large brain trust here of corporate folk, and, and so I'd be interested in hearing how you've, you know, how, how you're continuing to do that. And then the other thing is, is cargo, and how is that going? I know you guys are doing a great cargo expansion out there, but, you know, how that, how that's working into your larger master plan? And, and again, 5:40 AM, can't beat it.
I'm there, yep. So the, the community support is key and necessary, and I mentioned the Mid-Michigan Business Travel Coalition, and many of you know Paula Cunningham, who's the president of AARP from Michigan. She's actually chair of the coalition. Great representation between the university, the insurance companies and manufacturers in the area, and they're, they've been great partners since I've been back with the Airport Authority. I think some newfound energy and, and passion of, is taking this organization and saying, okay, what do we, where are our priorities? And the priorities go back to what I mentioned earlier. We have to fill these aircrafts. We have to put passengers in these planes. And one of the things that they're working on doing is getting more and more corporations to commit to a letter of support, signing it, changing travel policies, putting it in their policy, and then letting their customers and their visitors know that they want them to fly Lansing. So if I am one of the insurance companies here in town that has a frequent number of individuals coming in to visit them at their headquarters, they need to help us communicate to their folks coming in. We need you to fly into the Lansing Airport. If you want to do business with us, we want you to fly in as well. Yeah, goes both directions. And then the cargo side, actually, I've got a meeting with UPS next week at headquarters to continue discussions and partnerships, but there's multiple cargo carriers I've had meetings with, looking at something simple is some intrastate-type services to expanding our current relationship with UPS, to even looking at some unique-type hazardous material movement that is needed for supporting our corporations that are in this area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. Nicole, I just want to say thank you. I actually flew to DC and back Thursday to Sunday this past weekend, and the ease of use in the brew port were fantastic, so thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. I noticed that you talked about the fact that the airport's in the three counties. Are we any closer to getting Clinton or Eaton Counties to contribute to the airport?
I've had some good discussions with both Clinton and Eaton. I don't think either one of them are ready to throw it on the ballot for a vote yet. I think we're on the radar, at least for discussions for future projects for Clinton County, and Eaton is looking at a different path that's not necessarily specific to a particular project, but overall multiple projects that could be funded through, through one vote change versus multiple projects. So I'm at least having the conversations, and I would recommend and suggest we partner and look at having those continued discussions, because I can go and talk to them, and I can have some of my board members go and talk to both the counties with us sitting in all three, but we really need to look at the airport as an economic tool for this entire region. And, and it's, now, now's the time for us to go and look at making those changes.
Thank you.
So any support you can provide, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there others? Seeing none, I want to first say thank you. I remember when you took the helm in 2021, you immediately reached out to us, held respective meetings. I think, you know, at least in our conversation, you shared kind of the, the status of the airport at the time, but you really laid out your vision for the airport. It's clear that you are putting a lot of those things in place, and so we certainly appreciate that. And for full transparency, you engaged us about this presentation because you wanted everybody in the city to hear what's going on at the airport, so we appreciate you and your engagement. Thanks so much.
Thank you. It's important, anything I can do to help support you guys as well, don't hesitate to reach out.
We certainly will.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to discussion action item. Let's see, this is resolution for reappointments. There are mirrored reappointments. Before us tonight, we first have Patty Farhat and Samuel Brewster as reappointments to the Board of Police Commissioners. We also have Trevor Benoit to the Downtown Lansing, Inc. Board, and then we have both John Shasky as well as Diane Sanborn as reappointments to the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors. If approved by this body, this will be up for final consideration before council tonight. So with that said, Vice President Wood.
I would move the resolution noting that the appropriate sign-offs have been made by the mayor's office to make sure that these people meet the criteria.
Certainly. There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those are favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to Item D. This is a resolution pertaining to the Lansing Board of Water and Light return on equity agreement. I do believe we have Heather Shawah in the audience. Yes, come on down. She's the chief financial officer for the Lansing Board of Water and Light. As she is coming down, just to give you guys a little bit of background on this, we have received from the board dating back to 1972, a return on equity as compensation for usage of a number of public spaces, essentially. As a city agency under state law, they are actually exempt from taxes, so again, in lieu of that, we have received this return on equity dating back to the 70s. In 1992, we entered into a formal agreement with the board that has been amended five times since, typically to extend expiration dates, to change percentages in terms of the money that they're actually receiving, or I should say, we're receiving as a percentage of their, of their sales. And then most recently, fiscal years 2021 and 22, we actually received a set amount And then most recently, fiscal years 2021 and 22, we actually received a set amount of $23 million, $25 million, and $25 million, respectively. That latest amendment is expiring, which has precipitated a need to take a look at a sixth amendment. And so to speak to that amendment, we have Ms., and I always feel like I'm saying it wrong. Is it Shawwa? Fantastic. All right, we'll turn the floor over to you. Thank you. Nope, make sure the green light is on. All right.
Thank you, and good evening, Council. So great overview of the history and where we're at today. Amendment six, that is before you. It is a two-year extension with the term going through June 30th of 2024. A couple of key highlights with this amendment. We did recommend moving to quarterly payments versus by annual, which is what the prior agreements have had. We also went back to 6% of gross revenues, so there's no cap. This is slightly over the industry average for a return on equity agreements, which is typically at 5 and 1/2. And the 6% on gross revenues is based on, or based on our B W O forecast for the two-year periods. It would average to about $25 million for each of those years. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilman Spatafor?
I just want to clarify. Thank you, Heather. I think you answered my question, but it's my understanding the previous several years was a fixed amount, and this is now a percentage, so not entirely an extension, but just...
Correct. Amendment five was...
Was the set amount during the pandemic.
But all prior ones were percentages.
Yeah, and that's been anywhere from, historically, anywhere from 4.2% all the way up to 6.1%.
Correct.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have other council comments or questions? All right. I guess bottom line for me, do we anticipate, when you look at $25 million for fiscal year '21 and '22 as being that set amount, do we anticipate that this will exceed that number?
So our forecast is pretty conservative. With all the new development coming in, our forecast, we did adjust it for the Ultium Battery Plant in the future forecast, starting in '25 through '28. So we have upside potential with other development that, that are in the works, and we expect the battery plant to bring. So it's a conservative forecast. So to reiterate and answer your question directly, the average based on the forecasted is about $25 million for each of the two years. So I think year one is just shy of $25 million, but year two is over that.
Okay. Any others?
All right. And I only ask the question, and I know folks know, but I mean, this is such an, we want to make sure, obviously, that, you know, we're able to ensure that utilities are accessible and affordable and reliable. But we also, as a city, have to be viable. And this, of course, is our third-largest revenue stream behind property taxes and income taxes. So this is incredibly important revenue stream to the city of Lansing. That being said, Vice President Wood?
At this time, I would move the resolution for approval at the council meeting this evening.
All right. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. We certainly appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. That takes us to discussion action item. Sorry, this is E, a resolution for a ballot proposal, specifically public safety building and equipment bond proposal. We had a presentation last month. It was a comprehensive presentation. We had the mayor speak. We had both chiefs of police and fire speak. We had judges speak, and there were myriad others as to the need, as to what this is, and how we move forward. Essentially, what we're looking at is ballot language that calls for the authorization to borrow up to $175 million through the issuance of bonds. And what the money would be used for would be to erect a new public safety facility where we could centralize our fire admin, our police admin, courts lockup, and then also a number of public safety investments throughout the city of Lansing, namely our fire stations and equipment. That being said, this would constitute a 30-year tax increase of 3.9 mils, or $3.90 per $1,000 of taxable value. We did receive email correspondence. We received calls in, over the past few weeks, I should say. A number of folks are asking us to table this due to outstanding questions, lack of specifics in terms of location, line item costs, concerns over the development team that put the proposal together, and the cost of construction now and the impact of inflation on consumers and citizens. One individual referenced the fact that rent has, or rents, I should say, have risen four times faster than, than wages, as an example. That being said, I did ask Mayor Shore to briefly discuss this before we actually take this up as an action item. So Mayor Shore, if you want to reiterate anything from a few weeks back, that'd be fantastic. And again, we will, we'll take a look at this after that.
Yeah, we've got our developers here to answer any questions. Certainly, we gave you an in-depth presentation with pictures and with numbers. I can reiterate any of those numbers. You know, this is a program build, so there will be a lot of design aspects that have yet to be worked out. But we've done all the work on the generic numbers, and we know it's expensive. And the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. And so we can, we can review the numbers. We can, the only thing I don't have an answer for yet is location. I have been very public that I would like it as central in the city as possible. We're looking at a variety of options, but not all of it is city property. So you really can't say anything until we know what we can control. And as soon as we do, hopefully in the next few weeks, I will make that public so that way the public has that answer. But other than that, you know, we're happy to provide the pictures. We're happy to share information. We're happy to talk about the need. You know, we've got several fire stations that have tremendous need. The chief talked about that and the locker rooms and things. The only one fire station we expect that would potentially close because the condition would be nine, but we'd probably, that's why I'd like to, one of the reasons I'd like to be central with the facility so that way we can have a station there. So I'm not sure what the questions are that have come up that haven't been answered, but certainly the folks from River Caddis are here and can attempt to answer any of the questions as well.
Sure. If you, if you folks want to come in down, down into the well, that is completely appropriate. What we're going to do, before I turn the floor over to Vice President Wood, we're going to recognize Councilman Spatafor, Councilwoman Spitzley, and Councilman Daniels. Councilman Spatafor, go ahead.
Thanks. I'll let them get situated before I ask a question. Thank you, Mayor Shore. I do appreciate the need. I've seen the pictures. I've toured our facilities. It's unacceptable, some of the state that we've been in. I've been to the jail, as was mentioned a couple of weeks ago. I served on jury duty my first day as city council president and got firsthand experience with what the courts have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. I do have some questions about the costs. Not, I think the amount sounds right, but when I look at the program schedule, and I don't know what slide number it is, sorry, John, you're gonna, you're gonna have to know your presentation better than I do. See 268,705 square feet at $175 million. I'm not an expert in construction, so I'm not going to question whether that's accurate or not, but I do not see anywhere on this program cost and square foot total the renovations for stations one, two, and eight. So my question really relates to what kind of investment are we talking about in the three stations that are not listed for replacement? I see 22,000 square feet for Station Nine, which the mayor just indicated will be at the central facility, but not the cost for renovations at the three stations that need it outside of the replacement? So could you elaborate on that?
Yes. So thanks, everyone, for, for having us here tonight. John McGraw and Kevin McGraw from River Caddis Development. To get into, we have a, we have some information that's, that's more of an audit looking at what problems there are, but we have not fully dove into all of the problems in each and every station, because those change daily. We're waiting to get to final amount. Now, what we've done in that case is we have anticipated a contingency of square footage throughout the whole program. And through that, at the same price per square foot, we've given ourselves an allowance to work with. So until we fully know how much all of these problems cost, we can walk through everything.
Didn't really answer my question. So my question, my challenge is, is I'm about to vote this evening, potentially, on sending $175 million blank check to the citizens of Lansing during an economic potential recession, and I can't tell them what we're spending on what parts of our city. I've done two to three hundreds of millions of dollars bond proposals in the city, mostly related to education facilities. And at, and each opportunity, we've been able to show renderings and costs per facility and things like that so that residents knew what they were spending money on. They could, they could hold some pride in ownership. Is there, that, you're telling me that detail won't be available before the ballot?
So in the past three to four years, the, the city has undergone multiple different space programming studies where they've looked at existing facilities and tried to understand what needs to be done today, what needs to be done for the future. And I apologize for, for being so vague in my first answer, but I think what you're trying to get to is understanding how we came up with this total number of cost. And this, the needs keep on increasing. So we keep finding, you know, as soon as we find out that public safety is going on the ballot since our last meeting in the last month, meeting with, meeting more with fire, meeting more with police, meeting with lineups and staff, and meeting with judges on the courts, all of these different things, they, they increase. The needs increase. And so my answer is to say, in the beginning, what we've taken was a, a programmatic approach to historical data from other cities like Lansing based off of the past studies that have already been done. So we have a program done from each building, and we've walked through with, with police and fire. And we've understood that some of the rooms have increased. Things since COVID have changed. They've had new technology things and so on and so forth. So by the ballot, what are we trying to get to, right? Whether it's renderings, what we're trying to say is we have enough information today with inflation costs and contingency and understanding how big this building is. We need to know that we have the, the funds available to build this building, to, instead of come up with this program, to just draw renderings or come up with artwork. We've taken a much more simple approach. By simple, I don't mean cheaper, but we've worked with each and every one of these folks to come up with this, with this plan so that we can adequately explain why and how we've gotten to these numbers.
Okay, thank you. I guess my biggest concern is something that you just indicated here was that every day the conversation shifts, what we need and what we want. Want also being an operative term here, but need being a real term. That it's been raised here this evening. If we go out and say stations one, two, and eight are going to get renovated, Station Nine will be replaced, we're going to build courts, a police, a lockup, all of this stuff, and it turns out we can't afford that $175 million. We've sold the citizens a bill of goods. That's my, that's my primary concern is I don't see, and as I started, I'm very supportive of going forward on this work. I think it's important work, but I don't see the renovations in here and, and the ability to tell folks, these are what we're spending the dollars on specific, what dollars are being spent specifically, except $175 million on this project. So that's, that, I would, I would like, if possible, a little bit more clarity on what the proposal would be to spend the dollars on the facilities around the city so that when we get to the ballot, folks know that Station One will have X, Station Two will have Y.
Understood. So just, just to get, you know, straight to the chase here. We started with police, and we came up with a set number. We added some contingency in terms of size based upon each and every room that we walked through with police. We did the same thing with fire, but fire at the time was based on a number, when we first came up with this, was based upon removing administration and moving to the consolidated public safety campus, as well as a replacement of Station One. So then what we have in that case is we have Station Eight and Two remaining that we have to essentially solve for in terms of renovations. One of those has an estimated amount back in, and I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so don't beat me too much from going backwards. But I believe it was Station Eight that had about $10 million or so dollars within that. We have contingency involved. Now, how deep we get into solving all of the problems, I'm not sure. We have this contingency, we have this inflation set up so that we can approach most of the problems, but to solve every problem, as you said, wants versus needs, we're going to have to get in, and it's going to take those months from November, once the ballot is approved, all the way through the G M P and contracts to start construction, to really fully understand everything, get real costs at that point, and then be able to back in and say, hey, this is, you know, that, that next year is designed, but it's also scope, it's also costing, that will come back and present in a transparent manner.
I'm good for now, Council. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman, oh, actually, before we get to that, it is 7 o'clock. So if you are just in and expecting to see the city council meeting, we are still in committee of the whole. We have a few agenda items left, but we will, after this committee meeting is adjourned, we'll take a five-minute recess, and then we will actually begin our city council meeting. That being said, we do have Councilwoman Spitzley and then Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for being here. I think my question and concern is not as much for you, but just in general. Although, you know, hearing Councilmember Spatafor's questions and concerns, they do mirror my own. I, you know, $175 million is a lot of money. And I am not hearing you say right now, and I, so I'm in the business, and I understand that there are some uncertainties, but there is enough ambiguity in what you're saying that leads me to believe that there's a chance that this $175 million is not enough. And that worries me. And, you know, it's, I am supportive of this as well. You know, I, you know, I've been to the stations. I've seen the condition. I'm supportive, absolutely supportive of the courts having more security and more, and, and, and police. And so let's start there. I'm absolutely supportive of this. One of the things that I'm always, I'm hearing a lot is, you know, the last millage that this, that the administration did not fulfill their obligations from the, you know, promises made, promises kept. And thank you, Mark, for sending me that information. It was very helpful about what we used the money for. And so I think as we go out and we do this, I think that there is going to have to be a lot of education for the public of what we use those last dollars for, because I think that there is a misconception, or there is a concern that, you know, they, they voted for this millage last time, and they didn't get what they asked for. So it's a lot, it's a lot of money for residents with, with a recession looming over our shoulders at $150 approximately a year. And so, yeah, I, I would like a little bit more specificity of, you know, what you're doing, what are the renovations, and, and how much they're going to cost. And I get you don't have the numbers here, and so maybe, you know, you can bring those back, or you can share those with council. I don't, I don't know how that's going to work, but that, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Shore, did your, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just, I think what's not getting across is that, and you heard it from both the chiefs when they were here last time, there are some certain basic needs that absolutely have to be fixed. We have to have, you know, men and women locker rooms. We have to get the exercise equipment out of the, out of where the beds are. There are some, some very basic things that absolutely have to be addressed. Now, what John is trying to get across is that, is it going to be everything in the world we're going to address? No, probably not. But we are going, we have some very serious needs that need to be addressed. And we will list that. We will specify that. We will share that with the public. You know, from the city side, we can educate. You all have been through the fire stations and have seen it. We need to make sure that the public gets a chance to see the condition of the fire stations as well. And that's going to be on us to share with the public, to say, these are the conditions that your police and your firefighters and your court personnel are living in and are working in right now. We want to have more police officers. We're having trouble recruiting. This is what we need to fix. We want to have more firefighters. We're having trouble recruiting. This is what we need to fix. So we will absolutely give the bare basics. Not everything, not every, you know, internet, Wi-Fi, node, whatever, but absolutely. We know that there are some very basic things that, that need to be fixed. We know it's expensive. We know, you know, the courts have specific needs for justice. We know our police have specific needs outside of the, the two buildings they're in right now, which are not effective. And we know our fire stations need to be, need to be fixed. And we know what those basic needs are. So that's going to be the start. That's the bare minimum. After that, we can talk about everything else. And we'll have that list. We will absolutely have that list less vague, more specific. Again, we talked about some of the fire station things, you know, the, an updated, you know, jail facility to make sure that, that, you know, that it works, all of that. That will all be part of it. We can get you, I know that the, that we can have both chiefs back in again to talk through some of that again. And I think they expressed a lot of that with the pictures two weeks ago. And I guess anybody who didn't see it can go to the Committee of the Hole from a few weeks ago and, and see the presentation. And that will be presented. We can get that for any of you. Like I said, the only thing I can't give you right now is location because it hasn't been... the only thing I can't give you right now is location, because it hasn't been finalized, which we can't do until we know exactly where it's going to be and have control.
All right, thank you. We do have Councilmember Daniels, we then have Councilmember Garza, and then we have, our Vice President Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually really just want to just echo what Councilmembers Spitzley and Spatafor were saying in their worries. I think that we have a, you know, looking at a large number, and especially from my ward, I've been inundated with phone calls and emails of people who are worried about exactly what this money is going to because of the previous bond. I think it's going to be really important that if you are trying to sell this to everybody, that you have to show that you are not the previous administrations. The transparency has got to be way better on where every dollar is going to go. And, you know, even, even though I thoroughly believe that we need this for the infrastructure of Lansing, I think that you have an uphill battle ahead of you to try to get this through in November. If you're unable to give a concrete cause to it, we have, like, like you said, it's, it's great that you come in and, and present more to us. I don't necessarily know if you have, what, as of now, what it's going to take to sell it in November, that's all.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate you guys being here for our questions, concerns. I, I too echo my colleagues' sentiments here and concerns. You know, I, I fielded quite a, quite a large amount of emails with concerns as well, but, and, and excuse me for, for not, um, not recognizing you guys as company. It, it's called River Caddis Development?
Yes, sir.
You know, I've been in construction field for about 25 years, and I, and I'm sorry, but I've not heard of you guys. Could you please, like, give some other examples? This is a pretty large project, $175 million. Could you please give me some examples of other projects you use in the area like that, like similar to this project, and have you used local paper?
Yeah, so a little bit of background on River Caddis, we, my father's here as well, who started the company back in 2008. And, and I'll let, i- i- if you'd like to jump into who he is a little bit more as well, I'll let him do that. But we've developed in seven different states, across industry sectors, from retail to office, build a suit office, headquarters space, large-scale, mixed-use. We've done student housing, we've done market rate housing, we've done affordable and market rate, we've done public-private partnerships where we've worked with counties. We have individual team members within our team, our staff, that has experience on state, local, and federal projects, whether that's infrastructure or municipal. And then throughout that, our key role across the United States is to create relationships. You know, as developers, we, we're the shepherd in the development, right? We oversee the development, we put the team together, we bring in the best trades, we bring in the best folks across the board to help deliver a project. So locally, we've done less, but if you're talking, I mean, this is a very unique project when you talk about consolidating a public facility, a municipal public facility. But within that brings very unique opportunities. Now, it's arguable from, and what I would explain, and what we've explained, and what we went through in RFP, describing ourselves to the city and the LBA for this type of unique project back in 2021, our unique background and seeing every single part of the development process, being a fully inclusive development team, gives us a very unique look at the entire development, and it allows us to be a very unique representative for the city to help deliver this project, not just efficiently and cost-effectively now, but into the future. So we've worked on hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of projects across the United States, and they vary through all industry sectors, which gives us, again, that very unique standpoint and, and experience to, to bring to the city of Lansing as a partner. And that's what we pitched in the RFP process.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I, I kind of was looking for some large-scale projects in the area that you may have worked on so far. And when you say you bring the best, you know, trades in, do you guys use union labor? Do you guys have, have you guys used PLAs when you talk about on time, on budget? Do you guys use PLAs in your projects?
So we're, we're working through the city, city's process, city attorney, and, and the, the process that the city would like to see in this. Now, we're talking, it's a city building with likely union labor. Now, when I say we bring outside people in, that doesn't mean local trades, we're looking to keep this local. This is a local project through the city of Lansing. We want to increase the amount of, of, of pay in, or of income that come into the city of Lansing and stay here, rather than bring in a huge team from outside. So it's our goal to use all local and union or prevailing wage.
Councilman Garza, Kevin McGraw, president of River Caddis. Just a little background on myself. I was at Foster Swift for 14 years, and I was, had a litigation, and my largest clients were municipalities through insurance carriers and everything else, and, and actually represented Board of Water and Light on what is now their accident fund building on a huge asbestos litigation file. Was there until 2000, and since 2000, been doing real estate full-time around the country. Bill Demmer and I started this company, and we do large projects. My son's been with me, this son's been with me for 10 years, and we're doing large projects throughout the country, P3s. We just finished a, a large parking structure with luxury apartments on top and retail, everything for Boise, city of Boise. We're, we're in Texas on several large projects, like John said, about seven different states. The stuff we've done in Michigan's been a lot smaller. A lot of it has to do with the, the economy here and everything else, and John convinced me a couple of years ago to start focusing more on Michigan, especially where we're from, because we're from here. My sons were born here, all my grandkids were born here, all at Sparrow. You might also know my name because I was head of Volunteers of America and Holy Cross Services, and I was the board chair for the homeless here for 15 years until about six months ago. So we've been here a long time, on, on the Sparrow Foundation Board as well, for six years. So we do a lot of other projects. The one you know here is on Trowbridge, First Time Farmers Market, the entire retail center there, the apartments, everything else. But most of our larger projects in P3s have been out of state. We've done, I used to set up all the brownfield authority and economic incentives here in the, in the early 90s for a lot of municipalities, for their DDAs and set up all the commissions. So we do a lot of TIFs, I work a lot with M E D C. I, I tend to attract the most contaminated properties in the state. We're working on a large one in Grand Haven right now that's discharging PFAS into the Great Lakes, and we just cleaned all that up and de-watered all that. We're working on a very large affordable housing project in Kalamazoo right now, it's going to break ground in the spring, just got approved by Mishra last week, 226 units. Very contaminated PFAS site again. For some reason, we get the, the toughest. When we pitched this to the city of Lansing, and they did an RFP, and we won it, they won it because they wanted more than just a owners' rep, they wanted somebody to come in with private experience that could come in and fix problems. And that's what we do. We, we come in, we give you a private development perspective as well, and we come in and say, you, you've got to look at everything holistically and do this. So when we started looking at some of these issues, police and fire and, and courts, and by the way, I tried cases here in the 80s and 90s, and they lamented back then how they needed new buildings. So it's been a long haul, but that's happened. But you have the blessing of having previous studies done that put a lot of numbers on things. We were able to update those with consultants and contractors. We also walked through all your buildings and decided what it would cost and put on a number on that. We sat down with Baird Financial and your CFO and put numbers on what it would cost to do this. And we were told that we couldn't exceed a certain millage, no matter what happened, and so that's what we did. We know we can, we can fix, as the mayor said, your basic needs. We know we can remedy all that. We believe we can go farther than that and, and, and create a state-of-the-art system to prevent your employment issues, your, your employee issues, the, the lack of separation, all that, and make this a functional thing that the city deserves and is long, long overdue. The, the millions of dollars that's going to be spent after the ballot passes, if it does, by the citizens, is going to be necessary to do all that. It's hard to do that specifically before. But having gone through this with a, with a whole team of different consultants that are from every, every discipline, John was able to come up with a very good estimate that we added inflation to and, and cost of living and, and contingencies to make sure that this gets done. And before those bonds are, are issued and purchased, you, you guys will know everything that's going on, and so will the citizens. What we're trying to do is get the, go, the green light so we can go ahead and get this process started. That's what this is all for. Completely understand what the, the sentiments are and the concerns. You should have those. If you didn't, I'd be very surprised. So we're here to tell you, we're here as your teammate. We're not trying to do anything else. We're trying to work with you to make this happen. We're going to work together. And hopefully, over the last year and a half, we've shown your staff, I think you saw it with police and fire, that they believe in us, and they're ready for us to come in. We've already rolled up our sleeves, and we're already doing the elbow grease, and we're ready to continue to do that. We've been doing it for a while, for, for well over a year. And so we're ready to come in and, and prove that we can do this, and we're confident that the numbers that, that you're voting on and putting on the ballot are enough to, to remedy what the mayor has stressed has to be done.
And we certainly appreciate that. Councilman Garza, do you have other questions?
Um, no other questions, other than, I, I don't believe either one of you answered the questions. I asked if you use PLAs and if you hire union labor, and if you guys can't answer that tonight, I would like to have a follow-up email with different projects that you have had that done. And this is to the mayor. Would this be under the universal development agreement?
Yes. Oh, this would be our, it's not a development agreement with the developer, this is our project. So we would be doing it, it would be prevailing wage, this would be like a city, this would be a city project. We wouldn't need an agreement with ourselves, we would, absolutely, this is, this is our project, it's our build.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and I have a, a motion. I just want to clarify a couple of things. It talks about equipment in the resolution, but we are not talking about vehicle equipment. We are talking about equipment within buildings. I just want to clarify that I'm correct with that. Okay. You also mentioned in your conversation a few minutes ago about station one. Station one is not going anywhere. It's the administration portion, so that the public understands that that fire station remains there. It's just the administration part of it that's moving.
That's correct.
Okay. Also, I've listened very intently to the different council members and some of the concerns, and I think there were a few questions that were placed out there. And I think, for the most part, the majority of us are very supportive of this, but I think we need that last little step here to get some additional information. So President Hussein, I would move that we table this to the count meeting of the 25th and then take it up then. That will give you an opportunity to bring that information back because of some of the concerns that council members have expressed.
All right. And a motion to table is non-debatable. So with that being said, all those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Did you want to address, yep, go ahead.
Um, if we could have a list of questions from council members, if you all can provide the list to Sherry, and then it can go to Mark, and he can make sure, I just want to make sure we know exactly what, what the questions are that you are getting, that you want to know the answers to. We'll provide that to the folks at River Caddis. That would be helpful.
No, we will, in fact, have that put together in some time. Thank you. That being, oh, okay. For folks at home, we are still in committee of the whole. We have one agenda item left. Some folks might be confused in, in terms of looking at the agenda. What we are going to do is move the discussion on the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development letter of findings for non-compliance. We're going to move that to our committee of the whole meeting on the 25th due to the time. I want to thank Brian McGrane, who sat through pretty much the entire committee of the whole meeting, and only to have me request that we actually move that item to the, the subsequent meeting, which he has honored. So again, thank you to Brian McGrane, and we will take that agenda item up on the 25th. Now, that being said, that brings us to the resolution that pertains to the American Rescue Plan Act. This pertains, or deals with, I should say, the ARPA Second Tranche Budget Appropriation. City of Lansing, just to give you a little bit of background before I turn the floor over to, to Councilman Spatafor, city of Lansing was awarded just south of $50 million in ARPA funds from the federal government. Received the first tranche, which was just south of $25 million last August, and we're set to receive the second tranche, which is again, just south of $25 million this August. What we have before us is essentially a spending plan. This spending plan was referred to the Ways and Means Committee. They worked diligently. I want to thank the, the members of that committee for your work. I want to thank the administration who participated as part of that process, and also myriad stakeholders throughout the community that also engaged throughout the process. And then obviously, a number of folks have been down to speak to this item tonight. And so I want to thank folks that have been involved. And with that being said, we're going to go and turn the floor over to Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say the rest, the resolution, we'll start the process. So the resolution for accepting and appropriating the second tranche of ARPA dollars was referred to the Committee on Ways and Means from the mayor on April 11th, 2022. With that resolution, the mayor submitted to us a draft plan or a plan as to how he intended to spend those dollars using the blanket appropriation that was included in the original resolution. So the original resolution actually just accepted the money and then put the money back into city coffers and authorized expenditure of all 50, $49 million. Well, the second tranche specifically, we'd already authorized the first one. Beginning on May 4th, the Committee on Ways and Means began hearings on the topic, inviting participants and receiving input from members of the public, and many advocates for various proposals throughout the process. May 4th, we heard from Jake Brower, our finance director, who left us. Jake, we're still upset about that. Amber Paxton from the Office of Financial Empowerment, and Emily Linden, who addressed us on the issue of the Basic Income Pilot. Emily Lind, I'm sorry, Brett Koschinsky from the Parks and Recreation Department, Dennis Parker from Public Service Union Steward, Luciana Solia, Solis Mayor's Office, Jane Bias de Sessa from the Mayor's Office was there, as well as Lisa Hagan and Jim Smirka. We heard from Committee, constituent Lorenzo Lopez, and Councilmember Brown was there. On May 23rd, we continued discussions with folks, including the Office of Financial Empowerment, and we heard from a group, the Mayors for Guaranteed Income. They were there via Zoom through the Office of Financial Empowerment. June 6th, we heard from the Treasurer, as well as Chiefs Soesby and Sturdevant, Kathleen Edgerly and Public Service Director, Andy Kilpatrick. At this meeting, we heard from the chiefs of police and fire about their needs, specifically the needs that were ARPA-eligible. From Mr. Kilpatrick, as well as from Mr. Parker from the union, we heard about the need of about $42 million in fleet vehicles, fleet repairs, fleet replacements. Obviously, not all of that was critical, but of that 42 million, about 10 million was deemed absolutely critical and in need of immediate replacement. June 13th, we continued discussion. Councilmember Daniels was present, continuing presence of Emily Linden and Desiree Kirkland from the Finance Department, and the OCA was well, well represented by, at that time, Ms., Ms. Hagan and Mr. Smirka. We also heard from Joan Nelson from the Allen Neighborhood Center, Chris Medler from the Capital City BMX Program, Luciana Solis from the Mayor's Office, and Amy Guyer from the Capital City BMX Program, as well as Wes Scheinbell from Friends of England Park, Zoe Alstern from the Parks Board, and Brett Koschinsky, our Parks Director. This committee testimony centered mostly on restoration of the original proposal from the mayor's original resolution for $3.1 million in parks funding, instead of the proposal of about $2.1 million. That time, June 13th, the committee put forward its proposal for consideration to the Committee of the Whole. Three days later, the mayor read it, and on June 16th, proposed a counterproposal, which I will detail in a moment. Our city attorney tells us, under the Uniform Budgeting Act, did I screw that up, Jim? All right, good. The uniform, not yet, I'm still on track. The Uniform Budgeting Act, because this is a supplemental appropriation, the council has two options: to accept or reject the proposals that the mayor has agreed to. The mayor's original proposal, obviously, the committee felt was not passable through this body, so we put that forward on June 13th and June 16th. The mayor, in the spirit of compromise, sent us another resolution. Before I go through the resolution, I do want to say a couple of things. Thanking every single person here tonight who came to our committee, who called us, who sent us emails, who advocated for or against certain proposals. We heard a lot from a lot of people. This is, I think, in my four and a half years, is probably one of the most inclusive appropriations processes I've ever witnessed. I also want to thank Councilmembers Wood and Garza, the members of the committee who helped put together all of this work. It was hours of, of work, listening, input, and deliberations. And your input, everyone, helped with an inclusive, more final product. Second, I want to make something very clear, too, that has been maybe misunderstood. No funds have been awarded from the second tranche. No funds were awarded from the second tranche. In fact, the city hasn't even received them yet. Now, that's what this resolution does. No funds have been cut, no funding was revoked or otherwise taken away from any agency, any organization, or any spending priority. The spending plan that the mayor initially sent to the council was a proposal, and we appreciate that proposal in the spirit that he sent it to us, as a plan to invest these dollars in city services as well as exterior agencies. Tonight's resolution represents a compromise between what Mayor Shore originally Tonight's resolution represents a compromise between what Mayor Shore originally proposed and what the committee put together through those hours of work. Not everything we asked for, it's not everything the mayor asked for, but I'm proud of the work we did as a committee, and I'm proud of the collaborative spirit that helped assemble this proposal. Makes enormous one-time investments in essential city services, provides support to businesses, marginalized communities. This proposal funds gun violence prevention. It helps individuals with fees get back behind the wheel to get back to work. The proposal provides equitable access to outdoor recreational activities in every ward across the city, including the construction documents for the Morse River Pool, Morse Park Pool, excuse me. The proposal invests in upgraded technology to ensure that city services are better equipped to serve residents, and even closes the gap in funding shortfalls for the city budget experienced during the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, to all these specified investments, the proposal leaves nearly $1.2 million on the table for Mayor Shore to continue to fund programs that he sees fit that align with ARPA priorities and spending rules to invest in community agencies or other programs that the mayor finds as a priority. I'm going to walk now through the original proposal, the committee recommendations and the proposal before you today, so that we're very clear as to what we're looking at today. And Councilmember Wood did send a spreadsheet, I don't know if it's in your packet, because I'm working, it is, it's in your packet. So it's the one with the blue, green, and reddish columns. Initially, the mayor proposed $171,000 for the Potter Park 2021 Lost Education Program. That was removed from the Ways and Means proposal and was not included in the mayor's second proposal. Originally, for United Way, there were three programs totaling $987 million point five dollars. Most of those were removed in the way, yeah, 900, sorry. I work in the state budget a lot, so millions become billions and thousands become millions for me, sorry about that. $987,000. That was removed in the Ways and Means proposal. The mayor did counter with $735,000 investment in the VITA Mobile Program, which is a program that will help residents with income tax preparation. Is that correct? That's correct, all right, very good. In the Office of Financial Empowerment, the mayor originally proposed $100,000 for marketing of the OFE. We, the Ways and Means Committee, maintained that, but did remove $1 million that the mayor proposed for the basic income pilot. We had received some input from the Office of the City Attorney, that there is concern that this would violate prohibitions in the Michigan's Constitution that would disallow, disallow cities from lending to residents, and that this raises red flags for the city attorney, regardless of the fact that these are federal funds. So we removed the program at this time, and I've committed to working with the mayor to find other ways to fund the program, because I do think it is something we should be talking about, but it just isn't the time to do it with these specific dollars for the reasons that the city attorney may complain to the committee. And then we also, in the Ways and Means proposal, maintained $102,000 to clear driving while license suspended balances for residents of the City of Lansing. The Ways and Means Committee proposed $2 million for, the mayor proposed $4 million, excuse me, for equitable economic development programming in the city. The city council Ways and Means Committee reduced that to $2 million. The mayor's counterproposal kept it at $2 million. The facade improvement grants, we removed the $500,000 that the mayor had recommended and funded those instead through the city's general fund budget, which we, so it's an annual program. One of the things we tried to avoid in this Ways and Means proposal was funding operational programs with one-time money, because it creates a system where you now have to chase the dollars year after year and have to cut the program. So that's, you'll see a lot of one-time investments. The mayor did add back $175,000 in his counterproposal, I think recognizing that this is probably a one-time increase to the facade improvement grant program while we maintain the original amount in our general fund budget. I won't speak for the mayor, but he nodded his head yes, so I'll say that was an agreement with Peter. The next thing was the-
Can I stop you just for a moment? Thank you. Vice President Wood.
Just, Councilmember Spatafor, I think we have to be clear that we didn't remove anything what we said were these were things that we might not be able to support.
Correct.
Because I think when we say removed, then people think that-
Right, okay, that's fair. I'm reading your text, though, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, I know, but it was easier to put that than a-
Not included, how about that, very good. That's a fair point, though, thank you, Councilmember Wood. The Corridor Improvement Authority, originally the mayor had proposed a $400,000 investment over two years. The council committee proposed a $200,000 investment over two years. The mayor countered again with $400,000. There were conversion startup costs for the Lansing Economic Development Corporation at $200,000. The final compromise was $100,000 on that line item. The mayor also proposed a number of, for the South Side Community Center, Brand New Me, Mikey 23, and the North Star Alliance for Justice, at $650,000. The committee plan did not fund those, instead focusing on inner-city agencies instead of external city agencies. For the parks program, the council proposal was $2.1 million with no spending plan as to what those would go to, instead leaving the discretion of how to spend those dollars up to the administration. The mayor count, we put that at 2.1 million, the mayor countered with 3.275 with an additional $118,000 to fund the Morse Park Pool. This would fund a disc golf facility, facilities at the Adado Park, the pump track, the Rizdale Walking Path, the Hunter Park Pool upgrades, Silicon Mower Park Splash Pad, the Clifford Park Pickleball Court, which we learned about pickleball in the committee, so it was more than just spending fun, it was a learning experience as well. The Marshall Park Basketball Courts, tree planting throughout the city, Fulton Park Overlook, Foster Park upgrades, forestry waste air burner, Riverfront Park Restrooms, and $500,000 investment in playgrounds, for a total of $3.393 million for the parks investment. For LEPFA, we originally had seen a $600,000 operations support proposal from the mayor. The committee decided to fund that fully at $600,000, because it is an ARPA-eligible expenditure that would either come out of the ARPA expenses or the city's general fund, because LEPFA is experiencing an operational deficit at the moment, which is understandable given the current climate for conferences and entertainment. Lansing Businesses, the, there was a down payment assistance program for $500,000 that was removed. Advanced Peace was funded, proposed at $650,000, which was an increase over what we'd already budgeted in the general fund. It has not been made clear to us that an increase was necessary, so that was not included in the final proposal, nor the counter from the mayor's office. For the YMCA, there was a $160,000 proposal that was not included in the Ways and Means or the final product. There was a funding for community outreach services for the Larry Mitchell Troy Senior Community for $100,000, that was not included in either. A new HRCS line item was added by the mayor in the final proposal for $64,000. This is an inadvertent omission that we left out of the city's budget and forgot to account for in the city's budget, so they are ARPA-eligible, so it's been proposed to spend those there. There is a grad assistant program through the Office of HRCS for $400,000 to help young folks in our city struggling with the, through the pandemic to complete their high school learning experience. The Eastside Community Action Coalition was originally proposed $255,000 allocation, again sticking to the theme of internal city agencies. This was removed, this, I'm sorry, this was not included in either of the Ways and Means proposals, nor the final compromise proposal from the mayor. There were 250,000, I'm sorry, 500,000 and 250,000 for the Assembly of Lansing Pastors and Kingdom Ministries in the original proposal, not included in either the Ways and Means or the final proposal from the mayor. From the Fire Department, the turnout gear was added to purchase $150,000 in the next two fiscal years, turnout gear for the Fire Department. The chief, when testifying, said, when providing input, rather, was very clear that this is very needed, that we spend a lot of time transitioning through turnout gear and washing them, and extra turnout gear is vital for our Fire Department. In the fleet upgrades for the Fire Department, we have allocated in the Ways and Means proposal and the mayor's proposal, final proposal, $1.7 million. This is to upgrade, I'm sorry, to replace. Councilmember Wood, you're going to have to help me with this one, you keep these numbers in your head better than I do. Was it seven ambulances and two additional trucks? Something along those lines, not ladder trucks, but there's another kind of truck, and I can't remember what it is, but you remember, Councilmember Wood? Okay, good. And then EMS equipment. The mayor has put together, I'll call it a scheme, but in the most positive, positive ways of using the term, a program with Striker to fund over the next 10 years full replacement of all of our EMS equipment, and then every five years it's new, and, is that right? It's more, it may be more frequent than that, but it does cost $390,000 per year out of operations. The city council proposal, as well as the mayor's final, is proposing prefunding that for the first two years and then building that into our budget as time goes on. For the Police Department, Zen City was recommended in the original proposal, but not included in the Ways and Means nor the final. The Police Athletic League was proposed a $40,000 funding and kept in both proposals. A records digitization effort at $50,000 was recommended by the original proposal, the Ways and Means proposal, and the final. Laptops for training was not part of the original proposal, but it was $25,000 that Ways and Means added, and then included in the mayor's final proposal. Public safety barriers, these are sort of a crowd control, crowd safety issue that will help keep, when we have large-scale events on roadways, it'll keep cars from inadvertently or, God forbid, intentionally crashing into crowds at the total of $175,000. Mayor's proposal did not originally include these, Ways and Means did, and the final proposal did as well. And then a new records management system, because it turns out the state police has a really wonderful one that no one can use and no one likes, and the state police doesn't even use it anymore. So we do need a new records management system, and that's at the tune of $1.45 million, not originally included in the original proposal, was in the Ways and Means proposal, and then Mayor Shore agreed to it in the compromise. The Neighborhood Advisory Board was originally funded at $400,000 in the mayor's original proposal. The Ways and Means Committee did not include that proposal, however, the mayor did, in his counter, include that $400,000. Arts Grants was originally funded at $400,000. There are arts grants in the general fund budget, the city Ways and Means Committee did not include that, and it was not in the final proposal as well. The Public Sector Consultants was a $200,000 grant to assist with managing all the grants. That was removed, not included in the Ways and Means proposal nor the mayor's final proposal. The Department of Neighborhood and Citizens Engagement, Dance If You're Me, D-A-N-A-C-E for other folks. Originally, the proposal said $30,000. That was in the Ways and Means proposal, but through public input and discussions with the department directors, it was actually a typo, that should have been $300,000, so the mayor's proposal adds back $270,000 for gun violence prevention, in addition to the general fund allocation for advanced pieces, city-specific gun violence initiatives for a total of $300,000. For the Finance Department, we need new general ledger software. It is terribly outdated and should modernize the way we maintain records in the city for a million dollars, that is ARPA-eligible. The Ways and Means Committee kept that proposal from the mayor in the final, and then the mayor also kept that as well. There is an ARPA contract manager that was proposed originally to the tune of $200,000. That was in the Ways and Means proposal, and the mayor maintained that funding. Small Business Assistance, Small Business Assistance through the Downtown Lansing Incorporated was proposed at $1.2 million. That was reduced to $300,000 over the next two fiscal years for a total of $600,000 by the Ways and Means Committee from the original proposal. The mayor agreed to it, and in some great news, through our work with state lawmakers, we were able to get $5 million for DLI additionally to help with small business assistance. So while the program is not being funded at the original $1.2 million, there is about $5.6 million now available for that, which we did have Mrs. Edgerly in to talk about the equitable distribution of that to make sure it hits all sectors of the DLI, not just downtown specifically, and she was very supportive of that, very eager to do that. So that's great. Revenue losses, these are ARPA-eligible expenditures. We made a few adjustments to them, but that was only because of the way that the budget passed out. So for all intents and purposes, we're spending $20.8 million for general fund revenue losses over fiscal years, fiscal years 22, 23, and 24, and that's in the parking fund, where are looking to allocate $5 million for fiscal year 23, 24, for revenue losses there. City council projects, the mayor originally included $2 million for council members to provide input on. We took a different tact and provided input on the overall spending plan and removed that $2 million line item. Did not include that $2 million line item, excuse me, and instead provided the mayor with $1.909 million of the leftover funds to determine what that should be spent on through, I'm sure, a similar public input process he used for the other development of the original plan. 54A District Court was not part of the original proposal, but Councilmember Wood and others had had discussions with the court about resolution services at the tune of $30,000. The mayor did keep that in his final proposal. The City of Lansing Equipment and Fleet Fund, the Ways and Means proposal, the original proposal, excuse me, from the mayor included $2 million for critical fleet ARPA-eligible upgrades and purchases. The city council increased that to $7.218 million through the Ways and Means process. The mayor countered with $5 million, so that was a $2.218 million reduction to the Ways and Means proposal. And what the explanation that was given for the reduction was, we do not believe that even pre-purchasing equipment, we have seven, the city does not believe that there are $7.2 million worth of ARPA-eligible fleet expenditure.
Attention, please.
All right.
Attention, please. The signal you have just heard indicates a report of an emergency in this building. Walk to the nearest exit and leave the building.
All right, please follow instructions, folks. We are adjourned for the time being. Or we are in recess for the time being, sorry. All right, we're going to wait just a few more minutes for folks to get back, and then we are going to re-adjourn. For those folks that are watching at home, we apologize. For the folks in the gallery, we certainly apologize. We did have the LFD in, they did clear the building. It looks as if we may have had a faulty sensor on the eighth floor. So with that being said, we will re-adjourn in just a couple of minutes.
Very good.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to go ahead and re-adjourn. I do believe we still have a few folks, I'm sorry, reconvene, re-adjourn. I do feel like we've, we needed to adjourn a long time ago, but in any event, I'm sure we'll have a few additional folks join us. To the folks in the gallery, again, we apologize. It looks as if there was a faulty sensor on the eighth floor. The Lansing Fire Department did come in, along with the Lansing Police Department, did clear the building, so we were safe. And as if this meeting wasn't long enough already, huh? But in any event, before we went into recess, Councilman Spatafor was wrapping up our last agenda items. What I'm going to do is turn the floor back over to Councilman Spatafor to wrap up, and then we'll consider a motion, assuming a motion comes forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start from the beginning. This resolution was-
I think that's how it goes.
Someone's going to pull the alarm again. All right, well, I do want to just quickly thank LFD for their quick response and ensuring that we were safe, and everyone for following the emergency plan for the building. The final thing, issue items in this agenda, I'm sorry, this resolution, there, I was, I left off on the fleet of $5 million investment in the fleet. That does not include the $1.7 million that was allocated specifically for the Lansing Fire Department fleet, which we witnessed downstairs a few minutes ago, as well as their turnout gear, so you get a preview of what we're purchasing here. The City of Lansing, we added an additional $200,000 from the mayor's original proposal for premium pay. There was an estimation that there was, we would need additional dollars for premium pay, so the Ways and Means Committee added $200,000 in addition to the $2 million that this body appropriated a few months ago for premium pay. It was later determined by the mayor's office and Treasury and Finance, excuse me, that only $90,000 were actually needed to fund the gap between what was appropriated already and what was needed, so that was in the final proposal kept at $90,000. All in, we will be appropriating $49,924,664 million in ARPA funds for ARPA-eligible expenditures, and to that end, I would move the resolution for passage from the committee. However, it's not on the council agenda tonight, so this is just moving it forward for consideration on the 25th, pending further emergency drills.
Okay, and just, just for clarification, so this is both tonight and on the 25th, an up or down vote? To get it out of committee and not to the council agenda for consideration on the 25th, we need five votes from committee. To actually approve as part of our council meeting on the 25th, we will need six votes. So with that being said, there is a motion on the floor for further discussion. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, just a few questions to, I guess it's probably a combination of the city attorney, possibly Ways and Means and administration. So for fleet, for example, I'm looking at the eligible funds, and I see that it's listed as, what was it? Public health? And before COVID, we had fleet issues, a lot of them. I heard about it ever since I've been on council. We've needed engines, we've leased engines, we've traded engines, we've repaired engines, we need engines, we need everything. So COVID comes, and apparently we still need engines, I understand that. My problem is, is that it seems like we're taking some of these eligible ideas and just making it like, this is what we need for the city. And I look specifically at what it can be spent on, response to public health emergency with COVID, and its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households. We have household assistance proponents, people here that say, you know, this is a pilot program, it's been studied. We need it just like everybody else is, everything goes up, except for our wages. It's going to help these families, why can't we do it? And then my question would be to the city attorney, it says something about lending money? I didn't know that this pilot program was lending, because it seems like it's kind of like assistance giving. The problem was, is that apparently from somebody's breakdown, the city attorney said that the city shouldn't lend to individuals. So that's why I'm saying, this isn't a lend, is it?
Well, there's the federal law, and then there's the federal guidelines on eligible activities. But we're also bound by the Michigan Constitution. And the Michigan Constitution clearly says that a municipality cannot lend a public credit.
Exactly.
That's where that comes from. It's trying to put the two together.
So are we defining lend as like giving, or are we saying like, I'm lending you it? Like repay me or something? Because the way that I think the dictionary is probably, I didn't check it, but it's probably like borrow.
Well, traditionally, through the case law, lending the credit means giving money away without any consideration unless there's some authority for that in the constitution or state statute. But it's, it's that principle that's really bound up in municipal law.
Okay, it's just, I, because that's one of the few specific things listed for a possibility. I understand that you're saying, I guess Michigan, everybody else but Michigan and other state constitutions, but I guess I would challenge the word lend there. And also, my other problem is, and I know this is just committee, but this is my first time being able to, you know, really talk with everybody, is that we always talk about the groups doing the work, you know? We support the groups doing the work. The city, we can't possibly replicate all these great things like childcare. The things Mikey 23 does, computer literacy, and, and the above, income assistance. So I guess when it reads exactly that we can assist small businesses, assistance households, and nonprofits, that's what all of these are. So I don't like that, you know, some of these nonprofits, even though it wasn't binding, and it wasn't all, you know, allocated and officially accepted. But when they heard the mayor and his suggestions, these were, this was a meeting that the mayor had with these people, and it was vetted, and the proposals were brought forth, am I wrong? They were brought forth and then vetted that way. So there's definitely, it's not just like whoever, whoever. So I don't like that some of these groups, and a lot of them reached out to me. I saw a lot of them were in the stands, but since we had our break, didn't make it back up here. A lot of them reached out to me about, you know, how this is such a good thing at first, and how they relied on it. And even some of the steps they're taking to some service, the people of Lansing, it's not like external where we're talking about somewhere outside of Michigan or outside of the city limits. These are people in our city working hard. We all praise Mikey 23, and, and we all know about the benefits of YMCA and, and childhood, childcare. So that's just my initial thing. We passed our budget a few days ago, or a few months ago about, you know, public safeties, 40% of our budget or so. You know, we've had the millage, public safety, so all these things, yeah, we need them, we fund them, we talk about them. But I don't think that the pandemic, like records digitalization, we probably always needed that ever since paper wasn't a thing anymore. But all of a sudden, it's a pandemic, public health expense. And I just challenge that and would want to see us direct things more, like more specifically to what's listed here. But try to apply it towards our nonprofits especially, because they're the ones that we all acknowledge does the work. So those are just my comments, and I don't see how I'll be able to support, I'm still open, but how I'll be able to support changes just with the rationale how it is. When it goes to, we want to give it to the city for all these reasons that we always needed filled, you know, parks, general, 1.7 million. Yeah, parks always needed, and they still will, but I appreciate the idea behind it. It's just that I feel like I'm one voice that's going to be different, which may, and we've heard from people, represent what a lot of people are thinking. So those are just my thoughts.
Sure, we appreciate your comments. Councilwoman Spitsely, then Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, I agree with some of the stuff that Councilmember Jackson has said. First of all, I want to thank the Ways and Means Committee, I know you guys worked hard on this. And you worked hard on your First Amendment suggestion, which I totally and 100% supported. I guess one of the, the concerns or disappointments I'm, I'm experiencing right now is kind of the misinformation and rhetoric that's come about as a result of, of these dollars and the original proposal. You know, we cannot as a council or as a city be set up to pick winners or losers. All right, so when we talk about the guaranteed income, you know, for a thousand people, we're picking winners or losers. You know, there are more than a thousand people in the City of Lansing that could benefit from an additional $500. And we have no business in the city picking winners or losers. When we talk about the individual amounts that were in the mayor's original proposal, we're picking winners or losers. Okay, we, we, you know, they come forth, they, they had a worthy proposal. I mean, I'm not saying that their proposals are, are not worthy, because they are, but we have to be careful. You know, I don't know if they weren't told initially that council had to ultimately approve this. I, I think that it's unfortunate that they were given the impression that this money was a guarantee or a done deal, because it was not. And, you know, I can't, I don't, I don't know why that is. What I do know is that I've received a number of phone calls from local groups, from parks folks, asking me, why am I, you know, why is administration saying that council's cutting their budget? We're not cutting parks budget, we approved parks budget during the budget process. These are, these are one-time dollar amounts. And so to hear that they are being told by someone in the administration that we're cutting their budget is, is disappointing to me. To hear these local groups who are calling me and sending me emails that they've been told by the administration that we're taking money away is disappointing to me, and it, and it's misleading, and, you know, it's, it's kind of disingenuous. We're supposed to be working together, and it's unfortunate that we're here, you know? Council, you know, we've heard from a number of wonderful and worthy groups that were not included in that original proposal. And I've heard from them a number of times, members of the Latino organizations, member of the LGBTQ TIA community, for example, are looking for funding to continue their outreach, which is worthy outreach, which they've done outreach to help folks during COVID. So I agree that we, we need to fund those social groups. When they approach, you know, from what I've been told, they've been directed back to council because they've been told by the administration that it's councils, councils, councils doing this, councils the ones that's, you know, allocating the, the money. Well, then I think that the Ways and Means Committee, in their wisdom, gave the mayor a lump sum of dollars. And so by giving him that money, he can distribute it as he sees fit. And we're not taking away any dollars, we're giving the mayor a lump sum of dollars for him to allocate as he sees fit. The funding has not been washed away, as we heard earlier. Again, the rhetoric that we're being, that they're being told that council's washing away money, we're taking away funding from social groups, is, it is absolutely not true. And again, it's disappointing that we've gotten here to where, you know, council is, is ground zero of the blame game for these ARPA dollars. The mayor still has a funding source where entities can appeal directly to him for funding. So, you know, these organizations that were on this list can still appeal to the mayor for funding. And the mayor, in his discretion, and in his wisdom, can allocate funding. You know, we have to, we have to address our infrastructure. This is a one-time tranche of money that we have to address infrastructure. Our first, our responders, our first responders were working during COVID and, and, and when, and, and doing a great job. But the fact of the matter is, they need new equipment, and we have a one-time opportunity to provide some money for them. You know, the YMCA and the Potter Park, I, I can't support that. I can't support that at all, not when, you know, you have to pay to go to the YMCA. So the average Lansing person who is low income can't afford the programs at the Y. So why would we fund them? Why would we fund them? You know, and, and for me, I am floored that that's an appropriate ARPA dollar distribution when we can't give, we can't give incentives to landlords to offer Section 8. We have people who have Section 8 vouchers who can't find places to live, and those are the people we need to be addressing. Those are our, you know, our low income, a lot of times our, our BIPOC community who have, who have these, these, these golden tickets that can't find landlords to, to accept them. Why aren't we giving incentives to landlords to accept Section 8 vouchers? But that, that's not, that is not an appropriate and an allowable funding under ARPA. But we can fund the YMCA, and we can fund Potter Park. There just seems to be something wrong with that, and I'm glad that that's what's taken out. So, you know, I, for me, I, I do applaud, but there are some things in there. You know, the, the 600,000 or the 400,000 dollars for the schools, I get it, but they got a lot of ARPA dollars. And why are we funding graduate assistance programs when the Lansing School District got ARPA dollars? And the problem with that is, it's a four-year program, from what I understand. So, you know, $200,000, the City of Lansing does the first two years, Lansing School District does. What if they decide that it's not an appropriate program? And then we've given them money, and they haven't pointed up anything. You know, if we're going to do that, let's do it every other year. Where Lansing does it one year, School District does it the second year, Lansing does it the third year. That way, everybody has, you know, has skin in the game, except for Lansing putting up the last two years. So, you know, it's, it's, I, I, I understand that we got 90% of what we, what the Ways and Means Committee worked on. And, and overall, but the process has really disappointed me. And the misinformation that's come from somewhere to folks in the community that council is somehow the boogeyman, and they are taking dollars away. And this thing of picking winners and losers in a program where we have a number of worthy organizations that are doing the work boots on the ground today, punks with lunch, you know, know thyself's outreach. There are, there are worthy communities out there, and we cannot then just allocate money to, to a few. And so giving the mayor the lump sum, to me, that, that's, that's the best solution possible. So I'm going to get off my soapbox, but I did want to mention that, and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
We appreciate it. Very quickly, we do have Councilmember Spatafor, I believe, Councilmember Jackson. Mayor Shore, I did see your hand, but because this is a time for council deliberate, I want to make sure we first exhaust questions and comments from the council before recognizing you. Councilman Spatafor.
Sure, I just wanted to address a few questions that Councilmember Jackson had. They were not completely unexpected, he did reach out to me ahead of time, so we've had a little bit of discussion. But I want to answer them on the record. I will say, we've, I've lost track of the millions of dollars that this council has appropriated and accepted that were not just the city's share of ARPA dollars. There were tens of millions of dollars that came through this body over the last 30 months that we rapidly appropriated and distributed to countless community agencies doing great work in this community. That includes millions of dollars in rental assistance to help tenants make, make sure that they stayed in their homes. That includes the Board of Water and Light waiving shut-off fees and not shutting off electricity and water during, during this crisis. Includes CDBG money, includes COVID-19 recovery money for testing, for vaccination clinics, for all the things that this, that the COVID-19 dollars did do. This council acted as the fiduciary for the tri-county region in a lot of cases and multiple agencies to ensure that those millions of dollars from the federal government were well-used for the community and for residents of the City of Lansing. This $49 million before us was part of a deal in Washington DC to ensure that local governments like Lansing could recover from the pandemic and come back stronger. We aren't spending it all on the city, we're using 25 million of it to shore up the general fund to ensure that city services continue. In fact, 1.35% of the general fund goes to nonprofits in this community. Without these dollars shoring up the general fund, those expected and annual appropriations would be completely eliminated or diminished in many meaningful ways. So this $49 million was here for the City of Lansing to make investments, one-time investments. We have deferred maintenance, talked about $42 million in fleet, 7 million, 10 million dollars in immediate needs in the fire department, the turnout gear, all of the things that are really important. And we're still allowing and expending and appropriating dollars to support community agencies. So while I understand the frustrations and the concerns, this wasn't a binary decision between A or B. This was a compromise that was reached after hours of negotiations and meetings, and through committee work, as this body should function, for a proposal that invests in every single ward. So I don't believe a vote against this is a principle vote, I believe a vote against this is a vote against every, every single priority that's in here, including parks for our community, including fire equipment for our first responders, vehicles for our fleet. And yes, even some of the community agency funding that I'm sure Mayor Shore will distribute again through an input process. So I'm, I'm disappointed to hear that over maybe $100,000, this $50 million spending plan is worthless. It angers me, and it's, it's time to get this money accepted and appropriated, and that's why I do have the motion in front of us. And I will avoid calling the questions right now, but I would, I will be doing that shortly.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So we do pick winners and losers. Our city clerk picks them often, like the medical marijuana licenses. A lot of people more than 25 want it in, more than 25 are good, probably enough, but there was still the process and picks. Now, I understand council may not want to pick it, but I'm just saying the city does pick people to benefit from its jurisdiction. Also, I don't necessarily look at it like we're giving it, even though we are giving it to a nonprofit, nonprofits that are worthy. But I look at it more like not who we're giving it to, but what the outcome is expected. And we all talk about, at least I have, when I was campaigning, partnerships, 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 partnerships with the school, partnerships with nonprofits, partnerships with other jurisdictions, other cities, partnerships, partnerships. So, yeah, we might be giving the school district quote unquote, or, you know, Mikey 23, or, or brand-new me, for example, North Star Alliance for Justice. We might be giving them money, but what they do is they do services for our residents in Lansing. And since we're, the city's not like a person, the people that live in Lansing is who benefit. So sure, they're going to benefit from playgrounds at the park, which this will go to. I take my kids to all the playgrounds, I love them, and I remember we allocated money in the budget for playgrounds, and that's all good. And I like planting trees too, and I know Elaine, Elaine does as well. So there's going to be good things, but I am looking at the same thing you guys are looking at as far as who can benefit and who can get these ARPA monies, and it explicitly says nonprofits, including household assistance. So those are the things, we talk about priorities, one of my budget priorities was affordable childcare. So that's something the Y is talking about doing. So of course, when you're talking my priorities and the same things I want to see, I'm going to lean towards that, and I'm just one person, one vote. to lean towards that, and I'm just one person, one vote, and I don't look at it like a disappointment, I just look at it like we have different opinions. So that's just my piece, thank you.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. I'm, I'm hoping this is incredibly short, sweet, to the point, and doesn't precipitate a lot of back and forth.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not going to address the debate, that's certainly for council. I want to address the process, just so everyone is clear. We did a public forum, we took lots of input from groups at that public forum and after the public forum. We reached out to many groups. Anybody who came to us, for the most part, we were able to give some kind of funding to. Certainly, some people wanted a lot more money, and we didn't give that, not everybody was happy. We did inform the groups of the amount that we were recommending, and our Treasury Department and our Finance Department spent a lot of time doing that, making sure things are eligible and informing them. When Ways and Means passed their version, we did contact those groups to say, just so you know, you know, we have recommended that, Ways and Means has recommended not including those dollars, and there is a compromise on the table, and you are not included in it. We absolutely let those people know. Did we tell them, you know, council is to blame and council is the bad guy? No, we certainly didn't. We did say that those dollars were removed, and we provided the resolution that passed Ways and Means and the resolution that was the compromise resolution after the fact, agreeing that there would be, if that newest one passed, there would be dollars that were available. And I have been very clear with people, there will be dollars, assuming this most recent one passes, that will be available, and we'll, we'll start looking at it again to say, now we've got 2 million dollars, I think that's what it is, or no, 1 million dollars, 1.3? 1.9 million, and we'll certainly look and see, how can we allocate those dollars to, to make the best for the, the city? So that's the process, that's exactly what happened. Not interested in the blame game, interested in making sure that people are informed about what's going on.
No, and I appreciate that. As I, as I understood the concern from Councilwoman Spitzley, I, I think the concern is that there are groups out there, and now by your own admission, that were notified that, and I think you said I gave or we gave at least 10 times throughout your, throughout your explanation, but they were under the impression that that, this was a done deal. And so, and so, very quickly, because had they not been under the impression, there would not, not have been a need for subsequent phone calls to let them know that they were in fact not getting the money they expected to get.
We told them it was in our proposal.
Okay.
That was it. We told them it was in our proposal, our finance staff told them it was in our proposal, and they let them know that it was not included in the Ways and Means version, nor in the compromise version.
Okay. Vice President Wood.
It's, it's my understanding, and I'm sure Councilmember Spatafor will correct me if I'm wrong, but almost immediately after we passed our resolution, we were informed that we couldn't pass the resolution, that this was an up or down decision, and since the mayor did not agree with the resolution that we had before us, then it was a matter of, as an up or down on his proposal, and that's when we ended up with the second. So I'm not sure why the mayor's office with, you know, I'm assuming that the city attorney's office let the mayor's office know that our resolution wasn't worth the paper that it was written on, even though we spent all that work and time on it, but it was something that you could look at to determine whether you wanted to move forward with your first proposal, or whether you wanted to amend it, hoping that you would get council members to come on board.
And I would never, correct, Councilmember Wood, I will just say that there was a little concern, there was a little debate, I think, before the, the committee moved the resolution about whether that was or was not the case, which is why it is in Cow now, Cow, in the committee of the whole, because we wanted, under normal course of action, this would have been kicked out of the Ways and Means Committee and sent to the council. We sent it here because we wanted to make sure we were dotting i's and crossing our t's in conformance with the Uniform Budgeting Act. And yeah, you're, you're right, it was a late in the game discovery by the committee, and I think even law was debating the merits of that up till about the day of, but you're, you're right, it was a last-minute reveal to the committee that this, that this was a process that required the mayor's buy-in to, to have a resolution amended in front of us.
All right, dare I say, we look ready to vote? All right, there's a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Just to clarify, this is...
Just to clarify, a vote in the affirmative is simply to get this out of the agenda for the 25th. Oh, sorry. A vote to affirm is simply to get this out of committee, so that as a council, we can consider this on the 25th.
Okay.
So I will call the question again. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven to one. And with that being said, and with no other business before the body, we are going, going to adjourn the longest committee of the whole meeting, I think, this year, and we will begin our city council meeting in, let's say, four minutes, so we're going to start at about 8:40.